Please fill out a card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of the public comment or public hearing. Again, this is a public meeting for the community of Glendora. We appreciate and respect your participation here this evening. For the record, I will report that all council members are present and in their assigned seats. At this time, we will go into closed session. I would like to ask the city attorney to read the closed session title into record. Please do, sir.
Yes, Mayor, there are two closed session items scheduled for tonight. The first concerns real property negotiations, which is authorized pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The negotiators that will be given direction are the city manager, Adam Raymond, city attorney Danny Elshire, Assistant City Manager Moises Lopez, and Community Development Director Jeff Kugel regarding the real property that is listed in the agenda packet for tonight's council meeting. It's also known as APN 8638-015-011. And the second closed session item is authorized pursuant to government code section 54957 regarding a possible threat to public facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Elshire. And at this point, I would like to open the public comment period, inviting members of the public to address the legislative body. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once only on the closed session agenda items. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of public comment. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium, state your name and the subject matter you wish to discuss. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. As such, I will close the public comment period and recess us into closed session.
It worked. I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order at 7:03. Coming out of a short closed session. Coming out of a short closed session, meeting to get us going and I would like to ask our city attorney, Mr. Aileshire, to read us out from closed session.
Yes, Mayor, honorable council members, the council met in closed session on two items tonight. The first, the first involved real property negotiations, which is authorized pursuant to government code section 54956.8. And the property at issue is listed in the agenda packet and also known as APN, special parcel number 8638015011. And the second was a closed session, which was held pursuant to government code section 54957 regarding a possible threat to public facilities. On each of these matters, the staff gave a briefing to the council and a provision confidential discussion was held, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. And welcome for the audience here tonight. My name is David Friedendahl and I am the mayor of Glendora and serve as the presiding officer over city council meetings. In consideration of others and the business conducted tonight, please silence your phones and any electronic devices, refrain from speaking unless recognized. If you are in attendance and wish to speak during public comment, speaker cards are located in the lobby at the rear of the chamber. It's like this, a yellow card. Kindly fill out the card with your name and ask for information and submit it to our recording admin before the end of public comment. Again, this is a public meeting for the city of Glendora and we appreciate your participation and your respect to be here this evening. In lieu of our pastor Cordich, who was hoping to be here to lead us in an invocation, I would ask that Pastor Reverend Davis from the First Christian Church, please lead us in invocation, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Dan Tran. Pastor, please stand.
Let us join together in prayer. God of liberty and justice, as we come off of this Independence Day weekend, we are thankful for all of the rights and privileges that we enjoy in this nation. We pray that you would give us wisdom and being good stewards of those rights and privileges, both as those who govern and as citizens. May we use our freedom responsibly to care for one another. May you bless our meeting tonight with your wisdom and continue to surround us with your grace. Amen.
I can get everybody put their hands over their heart. We pledge allegiance to this American country that we live in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Davis and Mr. Tran. Appreciate your participation. At this point, I'll ask if there's any interest or need to reorder or add anything to the agenda. Seeing none, we will leave it as stands and move forward. Recognizing that we have a full room tonight and some standing room outside for the various issues that are before us this, this meeting time, I would like to read a statement that the city published from the city manager and the chief of police on or about July 1st regarding an incident that occurred in town and identify this as the official public record of statement. To the Glendora community, on Saturday afternoon, our police department received information from our community that ICE conducted an operation in Glendora. We recognize that such actions may cause uncertainty or concern among members of our community. We are issuing this statement to clarify the city's role and reaffirm our commitment to public safety, transparency, and compliance with California law. The Glendora Police Department operates in accordance with all applicable state laws, including the California Values Act, otherwise known as Senate Bill 54. As such, our officers do not engage in civil immigration enforcement, do not inquire about an individual's immigration status, and do not detain individuals based solely on civil immigration detainers or requests from federal agencies unless required to do so under the exceptions permitted by the law. Local law enforce, excuse me, local law enforcement in Glendora is focused on ensuring the safety and security of all individuals in our community. Our priorities are public safety, crime prevention, emergency response, and maintaining public trust. Effective policy, excuse me, effective policing depends on the trust and cooperation of all community members. We are committed to ensuring that no one in Glendora fears reporting a crime, seeking help, or accessing city services. Federal immigration authorities such as US Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, operate independently and under the jurisdiction of the federal law. The city of Glendora and its police department do not direct, control, or participate in those operations. We understand that this is a sensitive issue for many and we remain committed to open communication and respectful engagement. Residents with questions or concerns may contact the Glendora Police Department. We are proud to serve this community with professionalism, integrity, and a steadfast commitment to the safety of Glendorans. Sincerely, Adam Raymond, City Manager, and Michael Randazzo, Police Chief. So with that understanding, lots of sensitive temperatures are about. We respect those thoughts. And I expect many of you might be here tonight to address some of those comments of, of the events around us in our region. And I respectfully ask that you remember that Glendora is in fact, a community of respect. And we do have decorum in our public speak and allow that you will be able to speak for your three minutes. We ask and and seek that no hate speech be delivered. And I will lend a thought that your children might be watching you. So as you're making your presentation, be mindful of that. And thank you for your messages. So at this time, I will open public comment and invite members of the public to address this legislative body. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once on both on and off agenda items. If you are in attendance, as you've already heard twice before, please fill out a speaker card, looks like this, and submit it to the recording admin before the close of public comment. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium, state your name, subject matter you wish to discuss, and share your comments. And again, remember we have some decorum here. I would like to invite speakers to come up and I will share that we will allow everyone who has filled out a card and interested in speaking to have their three minutes of say. So, thank you for that. As such, I would like to invite up our first speaker, just as random as the cards come up in my hand, Mr. Bob Moore. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, Mayor. At 3:30 PM on July 3rd, I witnessed two Glendora PD black and white squad cars that had red lighted and pulled over an older white sedan just past the Marie Callender's Restaurant going westbound on Route 66 in Azusa. There were no other police cars, squad cars, and no Azusa PD. The Glendora Police Officers were conducting traffic around their vehicles. The occupant of the older white sedan had already been removed from the car and was detained in an unmarked vehicle. There were two other men with green vests, brown uniforms, and no badges. One of the vests were opened with no equipment on the vest, identical to ICE agents. Again, no other squad cars around, including sheriffs and Azusa PD. Azusa PD does not assist in immigration matters. This event occurred in Azusa outside of Glendora's jurisdiction. One of the agents went through the car, pulling items out of the car. It appeared that the Glendora Police were assisting immigration agents outside of their own jurisdiction, with the red lights on and their squad cars still visible. Eerily similar to the immigration agent I saw on the long Presidents' Day weekend, dressed in black and a black vest, no equipment, no badge, no insignias, with a German Shepherd dog hunting down brown-skinned people where this parking lot would normally be 95% used by Hispanics Latinos. How would an esoteric parking lot be known to a federal agency without this information first being passed along by the police department? Glendora has codified into city law a proclamation saying that it would not recognize nor abide by the Family Values Act of 2018, SB 54. This is why the watch commander with the Glendora PD said to me, he didn't know if SB 54 applied or did not apply to Glendora. This proclamation is a form of segregation and bigotry. It is a sign of Jim Crow politics and should be renounced and removed by the city. Glendora, you can do better than this. Thank you for listening. Good evening. Buenos noches. Hasta que nos volvamos a encontrar. Until we meet again.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Richard Viveros. And I'll offer that Mr. Robert Denman is on deck.
My name is Richard Viveros. I'm here with my wife. We've been residents of Glendora for 56 years and our concern is the Dale Road project. With 55 units being built, it's going to bring a lot, a lot of traffic to our neighborhood. With Grand Avenue being a major artery from the 210 going south towards Arrow Highway, what's to be expected? Exit left turn to Grand Avenue from Laxford will become extremely difficult during traffic hours. Exiting onto Grand Avenue from the proposed housing project will be impossible. That's the small street that's going to be built to exit from the housing project onto Grand. Adding additional cars will be almost impossible to exit left, exit left onto Arrow Highway from Bonita Avenue and it will become a nightmare. Let's not forget the Bonita Mobile Estates. They have 80 units and many, many cars and their exit is Bonita Avenue. I invite the board members to personally drive through our neighborhood during traffic hours and try and get out. That way you'll realize the severity of our traffic. Let's be proactive and come up with some solutions. Install a traffic signal on the corner of Laxford and Grand Avenue, which will alleviate most of the traffic bottleneck and traffic will flow through smoothly. Housing project exit to Grand Avenue, which is proposed and not really built yet, it's going to be a nightmare. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Viveros. Mr. Denman and Tomoko Toland on deck.
Hello, this is Robert Denman and this is about the new Metro train station parking lot. Hello, city, Glendora City Council members and community. I am here tonight to raise a couple of concerns about the newly developed Metro train station parking lot and adjacent properties on Vermont Avenue, owned by Metro that are already up for sale to developers, which was disclosed during the recent Glendora Station Area Vision Plan Zoom meeting on April 29th. Specifically, it was confirmed during the meeting that no guarantees are in place to ensure Metro requires a bidder to incorporate public parking into a new housing development on the current train station parking lot. If Metro does not mandate developers to include public parking with a comparable number of spaces, then there is a strong possibility this will lead to parking poaching and have a significantly negative impact on surrounding neighborhoods and businesses. Additionally, there's a high probability that parking lot in adjoining land will be immediately turned into low-income affordable housing due to publicly owned, in other words, metro, property. As stated on page 1-7 of Glendora Station Area Vision Plan, affordable housing developments are typically built on publicly owned or institutional properties due to a number of factors. Principally, the cost of land acquisition and the land holdings versus the time needed for the affordable housing developer to depend, to obtain funding and tax credits for construction. Initially, Glendora was supposed to have a train station parking structure with a minimal footprint. Then right before construction was to commence, it was changed to a surface parking lot requiring the acquisition of more land under the guise of reducing project costs and having the rail line completed sooner. It seems like the residents of Glendora got scammed into building a huge complex of up to six-story buildings consisting of high-density, low-income housing in the heart of our beautiful downtown Glendora. I encourage Glendora officials to explore the various legal options for mandating Metro maintaining current amount of easily accessible public parking spaces to deter parking poaching. Also recommend limiting the amount of low, low-income housing on Metro land through land zoning restrictions such as reduced densities and building heights. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Denman. Tomoko Toland. Welcome.
Mayor, councilwoman, councilmen, I respectfully ask that the council postpone reviewing of tonight's Glendora Stationary Vision Plan until such time that the community has provided more feedback than what has already been provided within the plan as stated to the planning commission last week. I respectfully ask that the newly formed Citizens Committee has a chance to review this plan and offer any feedback prior to the city council taking any action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toland. Erica Landman?
Hello, my name's Erica Landman. I had dropped off or I had sent an email earlier, which I would like to read. Dear Glendora City Council, unfortunately, due to a previous scheduled meeting, however, I was able to get out, lucky for you, so I'm here. So, we are unable to attend July 8th council meeting. We also realize we will be unable to address all of our concerns regarding the Glendora Station Area Vision Plan within the time span of three minutes. We believe the Glendora Station Area Vision Plan does not have the best interest in mind for the city of Glendora, nor the ability to conform with the current surroundings. This project is the incentive we needed to start public comment with John Harold back up again. Stay tuned for further information about the show as well as the Political Action Committee that will be set up to fight this project that will destroy Glendora's historic downtown and charm. John Harold Esquire and Erica Landman. Okay, I, I realize that this is coming from the state. I, I totally, I totally get that there's mandates going on, but the city totally needs to take a stand against abusive development, zero parking requirements. They're, they're just banking on people living right next to the tracks with not having vehicles and just hopping on the A-line or whatever. But the thing is, not all those people can get to everywhere that they need to on the train. So there's going to be 600-unit townhome apartment building, or townhome building that's going to reach up to six stories tall. That's proposed, going in on the, like kind of the backside of Albertson's, if you think of it that way, like on the backside of the track. But that's just one of the projects that popped up that the Metro proposed throughout all over Glendora that you look at it, it looks like the letter S, a big snake in the grass. And so we don't need that for Glendora. We really don't. And there is absolutely no consideration for American with disabilities. And there is absolutely no consideration for American with Disabilities Act, it's not ADA compliant, no parking required, no handicap parking. It's going to put the city into a big mess. So please ponder postponing any vote on the Glendora Station Area Vision Plan tonight, push it off, maybe have a community meeting or a town hall or something. This is a big issue, and we really need to take care of it now, as opposed to be stuck with it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Landman. Dan Tran. And Lana Ferrari is on deck.
Good evening, City Council, I want to just talk about, you know, immigration reform. First and foremost, our current immigration system definitely needs reform. I'd like to share my family's story. My parents met in Belgium at the University of Brussels, and after graduating, they were forced to flee their home country as refugees. They came here to America, and they didn't receive support from the Catholic Church, despite facing numerous challenges, including a language barrier and unemployment. They took advantage of every opportunity available in this country. I acknowledge that every individual circumstances are distinct, and I'd like to share my perspective. Growing up in the 80s, I've heard the term FOB, or fresh off the boat, used as a lighthearted manner. However, I never found it amusing, as my grandmother tragically lost her life during her journey to America while flying communism. To reiterate, immigration reform is essential, and I challenge everyone to contribute to finding a solution. On a personal note, I've helped immigrants self-deport so they can reapply for legal status without facing repercussion, demonstrating that there are proper channels for entering the US. Without order, chaos and severing prevail. Although our system is imperfect, it provides a framework and we should respect and strive to improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Lana Ferrari, hope I'm getting that right. I believe I am. Thank you, welcome.
I'm here tonight just to address briefly the Mercy Housing Project of Dale Road, which is my neighborhood. It's a busy little neighborhood, surprisingly, but, and I apologize, I have not done a lot of my homework on this project, I'm just now looking at things a little more closely. But I want to add to the gentleman's comment about the traffic in proposing that, I'm sure this project is already underway and everything's going to be happening, but the entrance and the exit area from Bonita and Dale Road, I don't think should be accessible for this project. I think they need to definitely come in and out of Grand Avenue, it's a busy street anyway, and their facility will be easily accessible from that area, rather than having people driving through my neighborhood, where my grandson plays. And we already have traffic in the morning and the evenings coming from Arrow Highway, they like to do that little jaunt, and for whatever reason, I don't know, I go to the light and go around, I don't see what the big deal is. But anyway, I just wanted to voice that, hoping that this project will be accessible only from that area. And I personally would like to get more information about this project and what's happening, and just more information about it from you, if I could. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next one is Raquel Botero. And Mr. Michael Barron is on deck, and I believe we have a translator for Ms. Botero. Good.
Hello. Yo estoy aquí por el problema que tengo en el edificio que compró la ciudad de Glendora en el 1758.
So I am here to speak on behalf of the building that the city purchased of 1762 Dale Road.
Cuando compraron ese edificio, ahí había, era un lugar de ancianos y también habían ochenta gatos.
It was a location of home for transits, as well as 80 cats.
Tumbaron el edificio, los gatos no los evacuaron, los dejaron ahí, y esos gatos andan por todo el neighborhood, y no están trayendo muchos problemas, especialmente a mí, porque yo soy la que estoy encargada de alimentarlos, ahora están teniendo muchos bebés. Yo fui a la, a la, esa de, ¿cómo se llama?, de ánimo control en Pomona, y me cobran 70 dólares por operarlos.
So ever since the building has been knocked down, I have been taking care of the cats that have been there. There has been litters, and I have been housing them and taking care of them. I've taken them to the Humane Society, and they are charging me to sterilize them.
Sí, 70 dólares por cada gato.
Twenty dollars per cat.
Y yo le dije que ese no son mis gatos, son gatos de la ciudad, y dijeron que eso no, yo, antes me acusaron de que si yo los seguía alimentando o dándoles comida, o dándoles agua, me iban a denunciar, porque eso era prohibido.
That I have been taking them to get sterilized, and that they have been telling me that I'm not able to do that, that if they, that I continue to bring them over to them, that they will find me.
Porque ahora, ahora en verano, hay muchos bebitos, tengo 21, 25 bebés, que los estoy cuidando, porque las gatitas las dejan, porque no tienen comida, o no encuentran, o mucho calor, están en ese parqueadero del, en el parking de, de, de la...
So I have been taking care of 25 kittens and feeding them, and it's really hot right now during the summer, and they are in that parking lot right there on Dale Road.
El problema es que esos gatos, la mayoría son viejos y están enfermos, los que dejaron en esa casa, ahora hay puros bebitos y están todos enfermos. Hay unos que han perdido hasta los ojitos, hay otros que han perdido un ojito. Ya he llamado a todos los sitios, mi hijo me ha ayudado, y nadie los quiere recibir, y nadie me quiere ayudar, por eso vengo aquí a la ciudad a ver qué pueden hacer por mí.
The reason as to why I'm coming to you is because there's majority of cats that are having health conditions and health issues, including blindness, respiratory issues as well. My son has been helping me, and that's what I'm coming to you today, to bring this forward to you and let you know.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Roxanne.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments. This has to do with the vision plan, and I want to echo what's been said before. It's a very significant plan, it's going to have a big impact on our community. It's tough to tell, you know, what's going to happen, there's always unintended consequences, but the main point is that as a city, there is more and more state mandates that are ripping local control away from locally elected representatives such as yourselves, and that concerns me. It's happening at the school district as well, it's just that the state has its target on wanting, they have their ideal vision of what's going on, and they want to implement it. So we have to follow the law, you know, there's several of us who would say that about the immigration issue, but I would ask, even though the staff has done a very good job in terms of outreach, communication about what was going into the vision plan, I have to admit that I wasn't paying the attention I should have been, you know, should have applied. And I would ask that something of a forum at Bidwell be done with a presentation of the details of this plan to engage more of the community, for them to be more aware. Now, on the one hand, you might not like that, because you're going to get a lot, a lot more feedback, but again, the importance of what's being proposed is so significant to the city and to the community, that I think it warrants consideration of that. So that's what I would ask, that we not rush things. The MetroLink folks have not yet made available the funding or their final plan as to how they're going to complement the Glendora Vision Plan. So it doesn't seem to me that we have to make that decision, you know, tonight. So I just echo what's been said previously, that let's do this in a very, in a way that the community feels they've been heard. And I think that many of us, for whatever reason, we just don't feel as involved as we should have been, and we ask for another opportunity to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Before you begin, I'll have Jennifer DeCombe on deck, please. Welcome, Judy.
Thank you, Mayor Frieden Dahl and Council, for all the work that you do and for having this meeting tonight. I'm here to speak also about the plan for the station project, and asking you to please postpone adoption of that plan. I think there's work to be done with the community, informing them much better than they have been, and I know attempts have been made, it's not a criticism of you, it's just very hard to engage community members when they have so many other things they're paying attention to. This plan is, as has been said, will definitely change the look of an area that is treasured by our community. It gives the small-town look of the community. It's right next to our downtown and our city hall, and the historic homes in the residence along this area. This, as was said, can be up to six stories and multiple developments next to each other throughout this small area. So I think the impact will be enormous, and it will be a mistake not to make sure more people are aware of it. The hearings that were held, or the opportunities for people, had very limited attendance, probably less than 100 people, and not all of them being residents of the city. I know our planning commission looked carefully at it, and they approved it, but I'm still asking that you give the residents an opportunity to look at it also. I like the suggestion that Mr. Barron made, that we have a forum at Bidwell, sometimes that draws a good crowd, and also mailers, and I know flyers were sent, but mailers that are similar to what real estate agents or people running for office send out, you can't miss what it looks like when it comes in, you may trash, a lot of people may trash them anyway, but I know a lot of people also at least give a glance to them. And something with graphics that informs people of what this plan will look like, and it's something that I know people who attended the hearings, some of them really did support it, they were happy with it, so you won't get people coming completely who don't support. You want to just hear from residents and make sure they are well-prepared before this plan goes into place. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Nelson. Jennifer DeCombs. And I'm going to struggle with this one. Lily Yerudia is on deck. Did I do all right? Wow, thank you. Guess it helps to have a name that gets hacked all the time, so I can struggle with that. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. I'm here for a statement from the League of Women Voters Mount Baldy area on peaceful protest. Honorable counsel, good evening, I am Jennifer DeCombs, the Secretary of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area. I've represented the League at several Glendora events, I am also on the organizing committee of the Glendora Pride in the foothills. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area, a nonpartisan grassroots organization, working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. We neither support nor oppose candidates or political parties at any level of government, but we always work on vital issues of concern to members of the public. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at local, state, and federal levels. Local government is a critical part of the constitutional democracy that we celebrate every July. A functioning democracy must ensure that we, the people, can hold our government accountable without fear of violence from the government. The League of Women Voters has supported the right to peaceful protest for more than 100 years. Brave women suffragettes started protests demanding something radical at the time, the right to vote. Peaceful protest, like voting, is a constitutional right, deeply rooted in American democracy. In recent weeks, we have seen a California United States senator wrestle to the ground and handcuffed while seeking to question a cabinet official about Federals, National Guard, and Marines in the streets of our county, placed there over the objections of our duly-elected California governor. Raids in Los Angeles County by mass federal officials have included arrests of community members and exercising their First Right Amendment to observe and protest. These tactics seek to terrorize anyone who would stand with their neighbors or participate in democratic discourse. The League of Women Voters condemns the federal use of force in Los Angeles County and elsewhere in response to largely peaceful protests. We ask this council, the democratically elected leaders in the city of Glendora, to condemn this federal use of force and to affirm the support of all in Glendora, in California, and all the United States who exercise our constitutional rights, including the right to peaceful protest. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Lily.
Hello, Council, hello, Mayor, thank you. My name is Lily Yerudia. I've been a resident of Glendora for 24 years, doesn't feel like it, but here I am. My sons went to Glendora schools, and I wanted to ask you, everybody on the council, how many of you right now carry your passports because you have a concern that ICE might stop and possibly detain and kidnap you? Can I have a show of hands? Okay, no one, no one, okay, for the record, no one raised their hands. I do, I do. If you are Latino, if you're Chicana like me, the answer is yes. Under the 14th Amendment, I am a US citizen, I was born in Los Angeles. Since last month, I carry my passport because I might be profiled based on my appearance, based on my name, based on where I work, based on the fact that I might be speaking Spanish in public, based on the businesses that I support, or some of the random assumptions someone's going to make. More than a third of Glendora's population includes Latino tax-paying residents. Close to half of the Glendora School District students are Latino. What are the officials of Glendora doing to ensure that we are safe from these increasingly unconstitutional assaults? This administration claimed that it would target criminal undocumented people, but 92% of those detained by ICE are not the violent criminals that the Trump administration claimed it would target. Instead, they're targeting moms, dads, US citizen kids, people attending court hearings, your friends, your neighbors, your family members. I understand a country's right to maintain its boundaries of legal residence and citizenship, but what they're doing now crosses a line and violates due process in the Constitution. Other cities are demanding transparency and constitutional rights. I'll give you some examples. Boston, Boston's mayor, Michelle Wu, signed an executive order directing the city to regularly submit Freedom of Information Act requests, FOIA requests, to peel back some of that secrecy around these ICE raids. The three main questions they ask, who is being detained, why are they being detained, and why are, where are they being held? Those are legitimate questions, our city can do that too. Federal forces, number two, federal forces are masked and anonymous. We've already had cases of criminals impersonating federal agents. This is dangerous, it feeds suspicions towards any law enforcement agencies. This council should be vocal in its supportive measures like SB 627, the No Secret Police Act, to require IDs and prohibit these agents from covering their faces while interacting with the public. Many cities in LA already have Know Your Rights resources for residents to exercise their constitutional rights here in the US. What are the policies of the city and Glendora USD at this time? I saw nothing on their websites to truly reassure students on their campuses or Glendora residents at large, except for that July 1st letter that you mentioned. So Glendora should step up. I'm reassured that you made the statement about the police, but we've heard that the police may not be doing what they're supposed to be doing, right? So who's going to watch what the police are doing? Is there going to be a forum for people to report these things? There's just so many questions, and I think Glendora really needs to step up and do a lot more for residents. Thank you.
Our time is up. Next is Kristin. Next is Krista Granger, and Linda Granacy is on deck. Krista? Welcome.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Krista Granger, and I am a Glendora resident, and I came here to talk about the recent ICE activity. So I am a Glendora resident, and I'd like to first share a little bit of information about myself. My grandma, sorry, I get very emotional, so I'll try not to cry. My grandmother, Margarita Adovalo, who was affectionately called Awalita, immigrated to the United States from Nicaragua. She had a third-grade education and came here for a better life. She only spoke Spanish, she loved the United States, and she eventually became a citizen when I was a teenager. She had cousins that also immigrated here, and they worked on farms in the Bakersfield-McFarland area. She had one child, my mother. She was not a criminal, and she was a major influence in my life. I bring up my grandmother because if she were alive today, I would be frightened for her to leave the house with the current administration's immigration policies and ICE presence. They indiscriminately pick up brown-skinned residents, with many legal residents being swept up, too, simply because they have brown skin. The suspicion list stops, appear unconstitutional, they're cruel, and inconsistent with the campaign trail words the American people were told. Quote, "On day one, I will launch the largest deportation program in American history to get the criminals out," and that's not what's happening. I could go on about specific incidents and ICE actions that are problematic, like the raid of MacArthur Park yesterday, but that doesn't seem to be the best use of my time. My 21-year-old son is a GHS graduate and Glendora resident. Two of his good friends also graduated from GHS and reside in Glendora, and they are scared to personally leave their house. These young ladies are scared for their families to leave, too, because of ICE's actions. While I appreciate the statement the mayor read that Glendora put out, I think the city can and should do more. I'd like to know what steps are being taken to ensure the safety and dignity of Glendora residents, like my son's two friends I just mentioned. How is Glendora working to ensure any masked individuals taking a Glendora resident are actual ICE officials? I'd like to also request that Glendora PD publicly state that they denounce racial profiling and that they will not support ICE efforts. And for what it's worth, I support immigration reform, but not in this callous and chaotic fashion. As I wrap up, I want to make it clear that if it wasn't for my immigrant grandmother, I would not be the woman I am today. I come back to my grandmother because this current administration wants to remove the human aspect of this issue from the public's eye, and we cannot let ourselves fall into that. We must treat each person with dignity and respect because they are someone's mother, father, sister, son, or they may be someone's awalita.
Thank you, Krista. Linda Granacy, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, council members. I, too, am, my topic is the ICE raids. Fear has come to our community in the form of unconstitutional federal ICE raids. A Los Angeles Times analysis found that 69% of those arrested in Los Angeles area from June 1st to the 10th had no criminal convictions, and that 58% had never been charged with a crime. This demonstrates they are not just targeting criminals, but also hard-working people and families. The methods being used are deeply troubling. People are being forced into unmarked vans by masked men who refuse to identify themselves in an effort to meet the daily and weekly quotas. Now more than ever, we must stand by our community's core values of inclusion, compassion, and nonviolence. We cannot allow federal actions to bring chaos and fear to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Karen Fortas Garcia and Kate Hamilton is on deck. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you, mayor, council members. I, too, want to talk about the ICE raids. I'm going to read my writing, please. "I am very concerned about the direction our society seems to be heading. I wonder, where is the compassion when people are being physically pulled away from their workplaces, thrown down, kicked, told to shut up, beaten, shackled, and then thrown into a vehicle and hauled off to a detention center where they have no contact with family members, no food or water for hours or even days, no access to their much-needed medicine, and the left in overcrowded and marginal conditions, uncertain as to what is going to happen to them next?" Are these people drug lords? Are they cartel members, rapists, murderers? Are they all involved in some kind of unlawful behavior? No. They are people trying to work hard to support their families. They do an honest day's work, the kind of work that most of us don't want to do. They are people we need in our society, and they are an essential part of our community. But we are seeing now, and will continue to see, a dramatic rise in situations where we will see raids on our businesses and good, hard-working people getting taken away. And these situations are going to continue to get uglier. And I also, the example of MacArthur Park. Are we going to be a community that just looks on and doesn't get involved? Or can we stand up and say that this is not right? We can take action, we can support the families, we can be vocal and say, "Not here. This should not happen here," and we can work to change the attitudes of people who think that this is okay. We need to remember that we are all part of a community that can make a difference. We need to be proud of who we are. We need, we can follow some of the things that are going on in other cities. Pasadena, Almani, Santa Ana are all doing things to help protect their communities, and we need to do something here in Glendora as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Kate Hamilton, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Frieden Dahl and fellow council members. My name is Kate Hamilton, and I have been a resident of Glendora for 25 years. I am here tonight to ask the city council to voice their support and concern for the immigrant community in our city, especially those who are undocumented. How are we, as a community, to know that masked, plainclothes individuals driving unmarked cars are indeed ICE officials and not just wannabe posse hunters? I am deeply disturbed by the way the government is carrying out its enforcement actions in a way that provokes fear and anxiety among ordinary, hard-working immigrants and their families. These people are our neighbors. They are people of faith, they attend our churches, they work in our local businesses, they are landscapers, construction workers, car wash attendants, restaurant workers, fruit stand vendors, florists, and so much more. Many of them have been living here for years, and there is no evidence to support the claim that they are all violent criminals. People fall out of legal status for many reasons: bureaucratic backlogs, visa expirations, changes in law, or fleeing violence without time to apply for asylum. But these are civil infractions, not criminal violations. Entering the U.S. without documentation or overstaying a visa is not a felony. The government's tactics are completely overblown. So I ask you, how can the city ensure these families are safe in Glendora? To conclude, we are called in the gospels to see every immigrant not as a burden, but as a brother or sister in whom Christ himself is present. For I was a stranger, and you welcomed me. That's Matthew, chapter 25, verse 35. May we never forget which side of that sentence we're called to be on. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Next up, Helen Glaze, and Bill Shook is on deck. Welcome, Helen.
Nice to see you, council folk. I am also here, so I am Helen Glaze, I'm a resident of Glendora. I am also a licensed therapist who works regularly with families navigating high-conflict divorce, child abuse, and domestic violence. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the safety and dignity of all members of our community. First, I want to thank our city manager for making clear that Glendora complies with California law and does not cooperate with ICE. That is an important step. But I'm asking you all, tonight, to take a stronger public stand by officially, as the council, endorsing that statement and considering additional policies to help protect our residents. What I'm asking for tonight is not radical. Cities like Los Angeles now require their officers to verify the identification of those claiming to be ICE or Customs and Border Protection agents. This is a basic step that prevents confusion, maintains accountability, and builds public trust. I understand the hesitation to do more. I imagine that some of you may worry that taking a firmer stance could place our police officers in uncomfortable situations with federal agents. I want to acknowledge that concern, and I don't want us to be creating unnecessary conflict. But asking for clarity protects everyone. It protects us, it protects our neighbors, it protects our local workers, and it protects our police officers. And it's urgently needed because around the country, as others have mentioned, we've seen a disturbing pattern, individuals posing as ICE agents to intimidate, exploit, or harm others. And I want to speak especially to how this can play out in the cases that I see professionally. In domestic violence and child abuse situations, the threat of ICE involvement or even the appearance of federal authority can be used as a weapon, particularly in mixed-status families where domestic violence is taking place. This is one more tool that can be used to control and intimidate by bad actors. And this problem is made so much worse when anyone can show up at a home, workplace, or bus stop in a gaiter, a vest, and khaki pants and claim to be ICE with no verification or oversight. If we allow this, we open the door to serious harm. We make it possible for abusive people to do bad things when we make it taboo and dangerous to verify the identity of masked abductors taking people off our streets. This isn't just a political issue, it's a safety issue, it's a child protection issue, and it's a community issue. So I ask you to please make this council's position public, make it clear that our city does not cooperate with ICE, and please, please, adopt an ID verification policy for those claiming to be federal agents. Let's make sure Glendora is a place where everyone can feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Mr. Shook. And Susan Kramer is on deck.
Good evening. I'm not sure what the official stand with the Glendora Police Department and the federal, you know, it's... Federal agents should, for safety, for courtesy, and what have you, come to the city, come to the Police Department, tell them they want to go, you know, do a raid or do whatever they want to do. Ignoring that and just showing up on their own, you know, that's undercutting our people. It's a safety issue, somebody just shows up, and that's never any good. Now, when masked people, when masked men, heavily armed, show up anywhere, it's intimidating. It's, you know, this is not wartime. And, you know, what's a legal authority here? If we look back overall, look back 80 years, in Germany, we had the brown shirts, who doing the same thing the ICE is doing. They had the Jews, the Slavs, the Gypsies. If you were one of those, they could just come in and grab you and do what they wanted to do. Well, I'll tell you what, they had a, they had a guy that was an autocrat, you know, running the show, he became a dictator. Now, what do we got? We got ICE. And we've got them doing the same thing here. It's just, just a repeat of history. They come in, just because you're not white, hey, I'm an Indian, I'm an American Indian. Maybe they want to get me one of these days, want to get all of us. And they pushed off a reservation once, who knows what's next? But it's not right, just because of a person's skin color. You know, by the way, you know, they say they want to get all the bad guys out? They're after the gangs? I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm a little crazy, but the Latin gang, Motor Circle Club, Vargos, and the Mongols are right within 15 minutes here, in Pomona. I don't see anything about them going down there and raiding them. You go in and raid those guys, you know, it's a lot harder to do that than to grab some poor kid and his mother off the street.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. Susan Kramer, welcome. And Linda Davidson is on deck, please.
Mayor and councilwoman women, I just want to kind of start off, I'm here on ICE. This year, they had a budget of $3 billion for this activity, and on the new budget, it's going to be $48 billion. So when they run out of Hispanics and Filipinos and Irish or whatever, what's to say that they're going to stop then? I mean, these guys aren't going to give up their job, this is a virally nice job. They don't have to, they don't have to say who they are, they don't have to show their face, they can come into a car wash and whip the people out of there. They threw the guy's phone away, and his daughter didn't think he was, she was going to be able to find him. And if they get shipped off to southern Siberia, what do you think the chances are that that individual is going to live? So what we are doing as a community is we're signing death certificates for people. And you are representing me. I'm 80 years old, I was born and raised in Glendora. I was one of the first of four, of the first four years graduating from Glendora High School. And this is wrong. It's emotionally wrong, I can't sleep at night, I worry about my friends, I worry about my council, I worry about my city. It's not going to stop with this. This is an idea, it's a plan, and it's not going to stop. It's not going to stop until we have another Germany-Hitler concentrations, people dead. And your responsibility as a council is to see that it doesn't happen to my town. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Linda Davidson, welcome.
Hello, I'm Linda Davidson, and I'm here as a concerned Glendora resident of 33 years and a fellow human being. We are all aware of the disturbing reports of ICE agents operating in our communities, masked in unmarked vehicles, picking up people off the streets and at work sites. No uniforms, no clear identification, no transparency. This behavior doesn't just undermine trust, it spreads fear and confusion among our neighbors, coworkers, and most importantly, children. This is not how a free society operates, and it should not be happening in Glendora. We can all debate immigration policy, but this isn't a political debate. This is about our values as a city and our values as people. When government agents begin acting like secret police, faceless, nameless, and unaccountable, we are entering very dangerous territory. I'm aware that all, or most of you, consider yourselves to be followers of Christ, as many of our city proudly do. Ask yourselves what Jesus would have said about this. He said, "I was a stranger, and you welcomed me," and he saw dignity in every person, especially the most vulnerable. Would Jesus stay quiet as his neighbors were being taken off the streets from their homes or from their workplaces with no explanation and no due process? Of course not. He would speak up, and so should you. All of you were elected to lead and represent our city, keeping in mind the safety and the protection of all the people who live here, every one of them. When... When armed, unmarked agents show up, it chills the entire community. Families are afraid to go outside, workers fear going to their jobs, and children fear losing their parents. We can be a city that values safety and human rights. These two things are not in conflict. They go hand in hand. I ask that this council publicly condemn these unconstitutional and un-American tactics, and formally request that ICE operate with transparency and accountability, or not at all in Glendora. Let’s be a city that doesn’t look away. Let’s be a city that stands for justice, for compassion, and for basic decency. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Devin Wimpel, and Elijah Kyumjin is on deck. Devin?
My name is Devin Wimpel. I’m a substitute teacher here in Glendora. In my first week of teaching in September, I subbed at one of the middle schools in this district, 6th grade. The class was cooperative, with only a few tally marks handed out through the day. However, after one of my classes, a little young girl comes to me. She looks up and shyly asks, “Mr. W., will that tally affect my citizenship?” I was confused. I said, “What?” She repeated herself, “Will that tally affect my citizenship?” I was so confused, I almost chuckled at the question. With a hand wave, I told her, “No, no, you’re fine.” I hadn’t even fully processed what she asked until she was gone. To this day, I am ashamed of having had nothing to say to her. As my frustrations grew, I chose to go to LA to be a part of the protests there. I know the media has spun its story of these protests, but I assure you, as someone who was there, the average experience was to stand in solidarity with strangers carrying signs, being offered water, or snacks from fellow protesters, having conversations with them about all that was going on, only to be suddenly and abruptly interrupted by the sound of gunfire from the LAPD to disperse the crowd. And as we run, scared for our safety from the police, I see nothing but protesters helping each other up should anyone fall, even as they themselves inhale the tear gas unleashed on us. All of this brutalization, and I come home to watch as the media slanders and dehumanizes us, as if our cause is something to roll one’s eyes at. We stood naked and afraid, among lines of armed men behind shields. I am not a person of any power or status. I did not know the people next to me. We had no shields, no weapons, no uniforms, no training, but our blood stained the pavement all the same. Glendora, like LAPD, has also said that they have no intention of working with ICE, but that is a flaccid promise in my experience. The LAPD is clearly willing to protect them from scrutiny. So what will you do, Glendora? What will you say when our Concerts in the Park event is canceled because federal agents decide they want to parade mounted armed vehicles? This happened just yesterday in children’s summer camp at MacArthur Park in LA. The worst is still to come, but what recourse do we, the people, have against masked agents who give no badge number, if when we speak out against the injustice, we are simply brutalized by the police? What recourse do we have, the people, but to scream and bleed? I find myself furious at my powerlessness, furious at my failures, and as I ask myself, where are the people who are supposed to protect us? Where are the people in the power or the status to protect us? Why do they not stand with us? I, a substitute teacher, swore the same oath to defend the Constitution that police, military, and all government workers swear, including you, council. When I first read this oath, I laughed, thinking, what, as a substitute teacher would happen, that I would have to defend the Constitution? And now I watch as the President of the United States, when directly asked if he needs to defend it, responds with, “I don’t know.” The fear that sweeps the nation is very real and horrifically well-founded. I’m wrapping up. As I reflect on our modern day, I think of what I should have done differently at many points. I now know what I wish I said to that little girl who I failed to comfort in her time of fear. I say now, with my powerless and paltry voice, “There’s people who want you here, kiddo, and we will fight whatever powers come our way to protect you. And if my only mode of reforce is to be brutalized louder, then so be it. But I ask you, as people with more power than to bleed and scream, what will you do to protect us?” Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wimpel, and Seki Yumjin.
Check, check.
Excuse me just a moment. Terry Merrick is on deck. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Hey, how you doing? All right, I have read about each member on this council, and this council’s legacy seems to be about service. Members here have spent decades creating jobs, guiding youth, and have at least attempted for community growth and tending to the vulnerable. Your work here seems to show that leadership is not about control, it’s about stewardship. Yet now, as we face authoritarian overreach, false warrants, armed intimidation, neighbors treated as threats, militarization against people, masked and secret police intertwined with ICE so tightly that there is no discernible difference, this is not protection, it is dehumanization. Legality, as we all know, is not morality. You do not honor a lifetime of volunteerism with coercion. You do not uphold community values with secrecy. You do not mirror the compassion of our food banks, churches, and the prayers that we have before this with brute force. Masked oppression with no accountability as quote-unquote “help” doesn’t justify the violence and fear. This cruelty is for visual spectacle. This is anti-humanist, and this is wrong. This demands more than silence and cooperation. It demands resistance, not just acceptance that we are separate departments, not just be hands-off. We must push back loudly and intensely, because no law can moralize the inhumane. ICE should not be allowed to operate here at all. They should not feel comfortable to take people with the silence and backing of our city. And to add on to a previous speaker, I actually don’t understand the hesitancy of taking a stronger stance. We need outright change, and we can do it. I want to share my favorite quote from Jesus, “Make sure to use violence against those who cross borders.” Finally, I just want to mention what a privilege it is, truly, to discuss these atrocities in an air-conditioned rooms with families to go home to. Why can’t we want that for everyone, and why do we show more support for violence than people? I agree.
Thank you, sir. Terry Merrick.
Hi. First, I do want to thank you for this notification, and for the promise and the commitment that no one would feel fear in our country, in our community. But as you’ve heard, and I can testify too, that’s just not true yet, right? So I have a business owner that I know, friend, same thing, naturalized citizen, right, walking around with her passport. Many people I know, and we’ve already heard, he’s coming after naturalized citizens. So that’s been a memo, right? So let’s bracket that. Today, what I want to talk to, so you’ve heard, and I’m sure you can hear, what the city could do, what police departments could do. But today, I want to speak as a Christian, because I’m as angry when Mayor Friedenrath, I hope your children may be watching, I hope they’re watching. I hope pastors in this town are watching. Because as frustrated as I am with government and what’s happening, I am more frustrated with the Christian church, of which I’m a member. I am frustrated that I know personally pastors in this town that don’t like what’s happening, but they are afraid to speak because they’re afraid to lose their congregations. And they’re right. They’ll lose their congregations if they speak out. So in the time remaining, and I’m glad that other people read from the Bible, I’m going to read, I try to read every day, and here were the readings from today. Psalm 12, “Help, O Lord, for there is no longer anyone who is godly. The faithful have disappeared from humankind. They utter lies to each other. With flattering lips and a double heart they speak. May the Lord cut off all flattering lips, the tongue that makes great boasts. Those who prevail. With our tongues we will prevail; our lips are, O Master. Who is our Master?” And thus, now here are the words of the Lord, “Because the poor are despoiled, because the needy groan.” “I will now rise up, says the Lord. I will place them in a safety, in safety for which they belong. The promises of the Lord are promises that are pure, silver refined in a furnace in the ground purified seven times.” So I’m saying to all of us that call upon the God of Scripture, it is time to rise up. And now let me turn to Psalm 46, 146. “Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, O my soul. I will praise the Lord as long as I live. I will sing praises to my God all my life long. Do not put your trust in princes, in mortals, in whom there is no help. When their breath departs, they return to the earth. Happy are those whose help is in the God of Jacob, whose hope is in the Lord their God.” And who is this God? He is the one that executes justice for the oppressed, who gives food to the hungry, who sets the prisoners free, opens the eyes of the blind, lifts up those who are bowed down, and watches over the strangers. He upholds the orphan and the widow, but the way of wicked he brings to ruin.” So I call on all of us in this town, and there’s a lot of us, there’s churches every Sunday with tons of people, follow what the Lord says. And if you ask, “Who’s a stranger?”
Thank you, Terry.
You know the answer, all right? It’s whoever you come across on the street, including those that are not amongst your tribe.
Thank you, Terry. Next, we’ll have Eric Hamilton, and Alicia Romero is on deck. Eric? Yeah, outside, perhaps? Okay. Welcome, Eric.
So I’ve been a resident of Glendora for 15 years, homeowner, actually. I grew up in Glendora. And I do want to talk about ICE activities that are happening in Glendora. So obviously, there have been recent reports of ICE or some other known, unknown entity apprehending people from the streets of Glendora and surrounding communities. My hope is that the city of Glendora has current plans in place that resist any support of ICE or other federal groups that have an agenda of unlawfully detaining people for deportation. These plans should include not providing assistance to ICE in the apprehension of individuals, not providing addresses of Glendora residents for this purpose, and providing protection to citizens who are unlawfully harassed by federal agents as well as bad actors. Human dignity should be the only cornerstone of Glendora’s policy regarding this matter. So I appreciate the statement that you read at the beginning of this meeting. And my hope is that Glendora, and by extension, the Glendora Police Department, acts accordingly, because you have a community that’s going to be watching, and they are going to hold you to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Alicia Romero, welcome. And on deck is Sarah Barron.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. Thank you for your opportunity to speak at this council meeting. As you stated, my name is Alicia Romero. I am a professor at Mount Zach and have been a proud immigrant and resident of Glendora for 30 years. I’m here to express my deep concern about the recent presence of masked quote-unquote “agents” detaining hard-working individuals who contribute to our economy by paying taxes despite their residency status. Thank you for announcing or supporting the city manager’s statement that Glendora follows law, California law, and does not cooperate with ICE operations. I ask that you make this a public statement. The raids are misfounded and a waste of taxpayer money. Despite claims that ICE is targeting criminals and criminal illegal aliens, the individuals being detained have committed a civil infraction, not a criminal offense. Last month, the conservative think-tank, Cato Institute, obtained non-public data from ICE, which shows the facts that might be surprising to some. As of June 14th, out of 204,287 individuals that had been detained, 65% or 133,687 individuals had no criminal convictions. Also, more than 93% of ICE bookings were never convicted of any violent offenses. About 9 in 10 had no convictions for violent or property offenses. Most convictions, or 53%, fell into three main categories: immigration, traffic, or nonviolent ICE crimes. The deportation agenda is dangerous, and not what is being advertised to the American public. Our city should not cooperate with those unnecessary and costly operations that intimidate and create fear in our community. I implore you to instruct a police department to verify the identity of anybody claiming to be ICE or CBP personnel. Seeing masked agents violently arresting individuals not only creates fear in our community, but also distress in law enforcement. How do we know that masked agents, often in unmarked vehicles, truly work for federal agencies? When it’s difficult to tell who masked individuals are working for, it’s difficult to accept that this is a legitimate use of authority. Despite my US citizenship, as some of the previous speakers spoke, in the last month, I have had second thoughts about going on my early morning runs. I wonder, should I carry my passport with me? My 80-year-old father, who has been a resident of Glendora for more than 40 years, also carries his passport and is worried that he or my stepmom are going to get snatched by ICE when they’re picnicking at the local park. With an increase in the arrests of fake masked agents throughout the country since the beginning of the year, my fears are not unfounded. Talking to some of my neighbors and household members, I know I’m not the only one. Please do your part to keep us from living in a police state and ensure that Glendora truly remains a part of the foothills. Again, I encourage you to publicly acknowledge the fact that Glendora follows California law and does not cooperate with ICE operations. And secondly, please instruct the local law enforcement to verify the identity of anyone claiming to be a federal agent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Barron, welcome. And Reed Pugh is on deck.
Good evening, and thank you for taking time to do this. I am going to be reading on behalf of a Glendora citizen who could not be here tonight, but who has a story of a different nature to tell. She says, “For eight years, my family has been and still is enduring the legal process to allow my husband to reunite with us here in America. Many friends and family have asked me why I did not have my husband cross the border while it was wide open during the last administration. My response has always been that we want to do it the right way. There had been times where I questioned our government’s commitment to its law-abiding citizens. Last year, it was especially disheartening when it was relayed to me that fraudulent asylum seekers were being prioritized for processing over legal petitions like mine. That would explain the two years of silence from the US consulate after our paperwork was submitted. You can imagine the frustration I felt when local activists began petitioning our city council on behalf of Glendora’s immigrant community, yet they did not bother to distinguish between legal and illegal. It is insulting to me that they would lump illegal immigrants with lawbreakers. Now fundraising accounts are being established, preying on the compassion of Glendorians to aid lawbreakers. Meanwhile, families like ours, who play by the rules, receive no help from the enormous cost of lawyers, filing fees, multiple trips to US consulates in foreign countries, all on top of maintaining two households, not to mention the unbearable loss of family time while we are waiting for our visa in two separate countries. My husband comes from a country with corrupt of law enforcement and gangs that rule the community with real terror. So it is extremely important to us that we are reunited in a community that respects law and order, and where we can raise our family in peace and safety. These activist groups here, claiming to seek social justice, are ultimately advocating for our city to thwart and obstruct law enforcement on behalf of lawbreakers. It is shameful, and it is un-American. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Reed Pugh. And on deck is Tanya Pace. Welcome, Reed.
Thank you. Good evening. I am appreciative to be here to speak in this public forum. I too would also like to add my voice to those who are denouncing the actions of ICE in our community. We all believe they’re not doing it right, and we all know people who are afraid to go out because of the color of their skin. And I feel compelled to be here as a good neighbor, as a loving husband and friend to those who have that fear. It’s not fair. I mean, I would want my neighbors to get up for me if I was being targeted for the color of my skin. And I call upon you guys to do what has been said, to require identification, and to publicly speak out against things that are happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. Tanya, welcome. Monica Garcia is on deck.
Good evening, council, mayor, members of the public. You guys are telling some horrific, powerful stories, and I hope the council is hearing every single one of them. I’ll come back to that in a second. First, I’d like to thank a couple of you, three of First, I'd like to thank a couple of you, three of you in particular, the mayor and the other two council members, for attending our Pride. I haven't had an opportunity to say that. I'm not spending any other time on it. We'll do it again next year, and hopefully we'll see the other two. On this... I'm across the map, as I'm sure you guys are. So I want to invite you to participate in a community art project that First Christian Church is doing. It's "God's Doors Are Open to All." And you can't get a better theme of tonight's audience and the stories you're hearing. I'm going to just touch on it lightly. There was a first door that celebrated the Pride Month. The second door, this is a nationally recognized art, community art program, by the way. And so it's sponsored by First Christian Church and the Art Academy. So I encourage you to go by, fill out your country of origin, put a butterfly, which is the internationally known symbol of immigration and migrant migration. So please fill it out, fill out your country of origin. It's a community art project, and you'll see how many folks in our community are represented across... We encourage your participation. It's important, and it will personalize this very topic. So I'm going to move on from this, but I will leave you with the Bible verse, because it's a great theme tonight. You've heard a few of them. Mark 12:31, "Love thy neighbor as yourself." The message is that no matter who you are, or where you are from, or where you are from on life's journey, you are loved and you are welcome here. And I'm going to insert, here in Glendora, here in our community, and here in the U.S. We all got here a certain way. So to that point specifically, I have a couple of specific requests. Those powerful statements, it's tough to kind of dissect this, and I've got 40 seconds, so undo it super quick. Encourage you to go, if you haven't ever done this. Go to the immigration website. You check and see and compare what it is to become... We're talking reform now, right? And what it was for your great-great-grandparents. There were virtually zero requirements 200 years ago. Now it's almost impossible to keep and get your appointment without getting deported. I'll leave it at that. The one thing I will ask the council to consider is adopting some policies and some resolutions to end ICE immigration presence in our community. I will ask that you urge your congressman to insist that immigration follow the federal regulations and ensure that all the agents are properly identified, unmasked, and all the things you've heard all night long. I'd also ask that you demand that immigration cease the raids in public places. It's absolutely disgusting. I will leave you with a sample ordinance and encourage staff, and I'm available. I got Fridays off. I'll help you look at, there's a bunch of samples around. Santa Ana, City of Ventura, Huntington Park, I could stand you for an hour on the list. There are some really great things going on. I'm sure you've done the research. Thank you, city manager, for turning it up.
Thank you, Tanya. Monica Garcia and Chris Fents is on deck. Welcome, Monica.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, staff, and neighbors. My name is Monica Garcia, as mentioned. I am a proud member, a proud community member in Glendora for 12 years now. I debated whether or not to speak tonight, but ultimately realized I have a responsibility to use my voice, shaky as it may be, to use my voice on behalf of those who today feel like they can't. I am an American citizen, and I recognize that I hold that privilege simply because I was born in the right place at the right time. I'm not here to ask anyone to break the law or interfere with lawful actions. I am here to urge you, frankly, to beg you to do whatever is necessary to ensure the safety of all members of our community. As leaders of this city, our city council, and Glendora Police Department, you have a duty not only to make residents feel safe, but to ensure that they are safe. The recent ICE raids have generated deep fear among our neighbors, our students, and the very people who work and contribute to our city every day. Why? Because we've all seen the images on the news and across social media platforms of people being taken from the streets by masked and heavily armed agents, often with no explanation, simply because they fit a profile, a profile that I also fit. I too carry my passport. I am an elected official. I am an American citizen. I am a daughter of an immigrant. That is the fear that I live with. That's not right. Again, people are watching the media. Of course, people taken from the streets by masked and heavily armed agents, often with no explanation, simply because they fit a profile. And all bystanders can do is record it on their phones, powerless to intervene. I do not doubt that this country has the resources to properly identify dangerous individuals, secure arrest warrants, and follow lawful procedures. So why bypass the justice system? I respectfully ask you to publicly condemn these actions and join the growing number of lawmakers supporting the No Vigilantes Act. It is not partisan to ask that ICE agents clearly identify themselves, produce proper documentation, and treat individuals with dignity and due process. This is a human rights issue. Every person deserves dignity. Every person deserves due process, and no one in Glendora should be living in fear. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Monica. Chris Fents, did I get that right? Thank you. Welcome. And Jackson Glaze is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Frey and all, and members of the council. I am here tonight to share my concern for our community. I have shared fear and tears with my close friends and their families, who are in danger of being kidnapped and sent to prison camps by agents of the current federal administration. Individuals of all citizenship statuses are being taken by unmasked individuals into unmarked vehicles. Individuals attending their immigration hearings and even their children's elementary school graduations were raided by ICE and unlawfully arrested. Your public statement says that the city is prioritizing public safety, but what exactly is the city doing to ensure the safety of all citizens? How will the police department uphold their oath of protecting and serving all citizens of Glendora? I would like to request that the council affirm that Glendora Police Department will not be supporting or assisting in ICE's operations. I would also like to request that Glendora's police officers verify the identity of anyone claiming to be ICE or CBP agents and any unidentified persons detaining citizens of Glendora. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Glaze, welcome. And before you start, Andrew Turner is on deck. Please.
All right. I'm going to try my best. I didn't come very prepared, so bear with me. I'd like to start off and say that I'm going to be exiting soon. And as much as Glendora has given me, I can't say fully honestly that I'm going to miss every single part of it. That being said, I have not yet given up. I have quite a bit of faith in the people, the leaders, and everyone I've interacted with, that there is a capacity for compassion, and that these people do care, and they can treat people with kindness. That leads me to quite a bit of confusion. I've seen people that I would consider friends immediately turn and say things that I can't quite understand. I don't get who can look at something such as the countless examples we've heard so far today and feel a sense of satisfaction or happiness or joy from that. And looking at you all, I don't consider you people who are deprived of morals. You seem like nice people. And I don't, I assume that you don't also feel happiness or joy when someone faces terrible pain or tragedy. So I just would love better understanding from anyone who is listening to these stories and hearing these people's personal testaments and either roll their eyes, or put it away, or dismiss it as crazy or radical, or whatever else it could be. I don't understand. And I really, really hope that you all will take the time to consider it. Not just based on the merits, based on the morals you already have. I don't think you're going to take your moral advice from me as a 17-year-old, but using your current systems that have worked for you, evaluate what's currently happening, and decide if this is really what I want to stand behind. I know there are people who will never give up the fact that legal immigration is always wrong. I've given up on that conversation and debate quite some time ago. But even if that is your current stance, evaluate what is currently happening, what is currently being offered by a federal government, and please reconsider. That is the only way to go about it. I'm absolutely certain we could do something better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson. Mr. Turner, welcome.
Honorable mayor, honorable counsel. I am very pleased to know some of you somewhat personally, and I'm glad to be part of the speaking here, of all the wonderful stories and all the conversations. And I want to say thank you all for allowing us to speak, for sitting here, for listening to us, and for entertaining what we're saying here. I think it's very important. I'm going to say that I've lived in Glendora most of my life. My family has been here for almost 100 years. We've been here for a long time. There are people in this community who have been here for just as long as me, just as long as my family, sometimes longer. Those people happen to have brown skin, dark hair, and they may be feeling fear and ready to hide in their homes or have communications with family and other people, their friends and their community members, to keep an eye on them. That's not right. This is Glendora. This council, our police department, are here to protect. They're here to serve us, as are you. And I think all of you have done a fantastic job over the last few years of making Glendora a fantastic place to live. I've never been more excited to be a Glendora resident than the last couple of years of living here. So thank you for that. I want you to continue to do the great work that you're doing to make Glendora a fantastic place to live. There's lots of things to do. I emailed, I read your statement when it was released. I emailed the police department and got a really bad response. The police are here to protect and to serve. If our residents are being pulled off the streets by unmarked people with masks, we don't know who they are, who's to say that you, your family members, your children, your children's friends, your friends, your neighbors, your community, your taxpayers? How are they going to be protected from being pulled off the street? Our police should be here to protect us. If these ICE agents don't identify themselves, which we have asked several times, and I hope this is something that you consider doing, and if you don't consider doing it, then do it. That's fantastic. The police here need to protect our residents from kidnapping. I feel safe as a white person, but I don't know how long I'll feel safe in this city. As a queer person, as a disabled person, I may be targeted. So I want to say thank you again for allowing us all to speak. I know this has been a very emotional topic for a lot of us. I know that you're probably all tired. There's a lot of things that you want to get done. I'm tired too. We're all tired here in Glendora for these things. But this is so important. It is vital to our city's survival that we take care of ourselves and we take care of our community. I know that some of you vote Republican. I know some of you may not be excited about this, but this is your chance to make Glendora a great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Before I close public comment, I will ask, is there anyone else who wished to speak that has not presented a card yet? Just a moment, please. On behalf of... Okay. All right. I might have missed one. I'm sorry. It was no name, but "On behalf of Raquel Potero." Did that person, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was tied to the...
No worries.
Raquel's other card, and the translate, so, my air, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Robert Chacon. I reside currently in Glendora, and I'd like to speak on 12, or sorry, 1762 Dale Road, formerly known as the Dorado Oaks. It used to serve as some type of retirement home facility for the elderly. Upon demolition, however, there was well over 80 cats residing in that facility. There was a complete blatant disregard for their well-being, and most of those kittens didn't make it through. However, the surviving ones were brought to my mother because she has worked in the past with the Humane Society previously. The biggest issue is that at one point, we were allowed to bring in two strays. Then it slowly got confined to one, and then after, we were expected to pay. Currently, the situation is we have over 20 kittens. They're not the same litter. It's a perpetual cycle. These cats are strays. They don't belong to anyone. But the Humane Society is respectfully, at least they're respectful about it, but they don't have the means to at least allot somebody over to address the situation. They've told us that Glendora sees these animals as feral and they can sustain themselves. However, half of these cats have already been injured. Most of them are blind, and the rest have upper respiratory infections. So my mom is well past her 60s. Sorry about that, to put her on the spot, but I'm...
Hey, that's young. Don't worry.
I would prefer she worry about gardening and not burying over 20 kittens this year already. She's been doing this for over three months. As I mentioned, this is different litters, so some kittens require a little more attention. Others need to be bottle-fed and what have you. We're not asking for any type of reimbursement. We just like for the city to come in and take accountability. Like I said, I appreciate my mom. She's got a heart of gold. But the thing we have in life that is most valuable is our time. And I would appreciate my mom at least taking some time to take care of herself. So that's why I'm here. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I just wanted to voice my concern, and I look forward to hearing what the city has to do, including March Altrabald, because I spoke to him last week. And from my understanding is that he kind of oversees some of the contracts with the Humane Society. So maybe it's time for us to kind of revisit that and take a look and see what we can do to shift things around. So thank you again. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Very well. One last call. Is there anyone else that might have been missed? Okay, with that, I will close public comment at 8:42.
For the record, mayor...
Please.
Three public comments were received, which were included. One corresponded to item number 11, and they have been incorporated in the agenda packet distributed to the legislative body and made available to the public.
Very good. Thank you very much. You're all good.
Mayor, do you want to take a brief recess?
Yeah, you know what? Let's please take a five to 10-minute recess and get our grip, and there we go. Call this recess for eight minutes, please. Thank you. I would like to call the meeting back to order. Before I bring it back to member statements, I just want to acknowledge that as a longtime friend of ours shared once, even when the community members are passionate about a subject, they're very respectful to each other, and it showed again tonight. So, thank you all, and I know that the comments were heard with great ears. With that, I'd like to bring it back to the member statements and reports and invite commenters. So, I'll start with Shawna, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep my comments short since we have a long meeting ahead of us still, but would just like to say that I thoroughly appreciate all of our community members who came out tonight and spoke. I know that it can be stressful to do that, and this topic, I think, is extremely stressful. So, I appreciate your time in coming out and just showing how amazing our community is. I'll echo what David said. I just, I think, you know, everybody was so respectful of each other, and it just makes me really proud to be part of this community. So, I appreciate everybody being here. I would like, I'm curious. I think it's important. I, you know, I appreciate that people are coming here to voice their concerns, but I hope that regardless of what someone feels about specifically the topic of the ICE issue, that people are also bringing these concerns up to our state and U.S. representatives. So, I don't know if, do we have this contact information for our Congress?
It's available on the website.
City website should have.
I thought so. So, you know, I would just encourage people to go to the city website, get that information, and also share your concerns with our representatives. That's it for me.
Thank you, Shawna. Mendel?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I want to echo what has just been said. Thank you so much for the folks that stood up and shared their, you know, heart and their mind. It's an honor to engage with you. Please know that you were heard, and there was a lot of heavy, heavy stuff shared, and I agree with a lot of that. When I was mayor first time, we had a similar exchange about the same bill that we've talked about, SB 54. Some of you were probably here that night. And it was clear then, and it is clear now, that we abide by all of the rules, not only embedded within that bill, but all of the other things as the mayor read. And we not only had a public hearing that was very interesting and robust and energized, but then we followed that up with a town hall, which was equally as, you know, good. And I don't think that anything has changed in terms of what the police do within that law. And I want to assure you that that is being done, and they honor that. And the chief can speak if he wants more on that, or Adam can, but that law has been etched in my own mind and my own heart, because I was in the mayor's seat and entertained everybody that, you know, spoke. I want to affirm my support of the letter and the statement that the city has, you know, made. I don't know if there needs to be formal acceptance of that or action of that. I believe that the five of us concurred with what was said. I don't want to speak for the other four, but I was, I thought that that was true. And I sincerely feel that we are not only doing it day by day, but within spirit too. A couple of other things. I do agree with my friend Terry Merrick that the faith sector of our city needs to speak up. I am a man of faith, and I couldn't agree more with what she said. Lastly, I don't know law. I was a banker, so I know banking law, but I don't know the, you know, constitutional law. And in Article 6, Clause 2, it speaks about federal powers. And I don't know how far that we can go specifically to ask for ICE or any sort of government authority to identify themselves. That is a question that I would leave up to Danny or Adam or our chief. That narrative was said a lot by a lot of folks, and I don't think that's too much to ask. But thank you for coming out, and thank you for expressing that. I also want to just say thank you to our incredible Tartan Band that represented us so well on the, you know, Fourth. I was worried about them because the weather was touch and go there, but they were amazing to watch. And I shout out to high school, to all of the women and men that marched, and all of the parents, directors and everything. You made us really look well. So, thank you for that too. And with that, Mayor, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Mendel. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think to answer the question or to address about whether or not people come here or speak to their state or their federal reps, I think that the events that have been occurring have caused people to feel as though they're shouting into the wind, that they're not being able to do anything. And here in these chambers, they have that connection. We are the representatives of the local community, and so I think that's why it's so important that people come and share their opinion here, because we are a place where they can be heard. We are a place where you can have that face-to-face contact. So, I thank everyone that came tonight to do that. And, you know, we just came off of the Fourth of July weekend in which we celebrated liberty and freedom. Every time we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we end it with liberty and justice for all. So, I think that that is what people are hoping and dreaming of, people are wanting to experience. President Roosevelt articulated the four essential freedoms, and among those was freedom from fear, which has now been codified in the United Nations Declaration of Human Rights. And when we say freedom from fear, we're not simply just saying freedom from war, violence. We're talking about everyday existence to feel freedom from discrimination, from fear of being able to live your life each and every day, freedom from persecution. So, I would hope and pray that as the city of Glendora, that when we talk about our community values, that community values mean dignity, respect, compassion, and care for each and every member of the community, regardless of where they come from. And also, that is we believe and uphold and swear an oath to the Constitution, that part of that swearing an oath to the Constitution means due process. And so, I for one affirm the statement that the city manager and the chief put together, but I hope also that our words and our actions demonstrate to our community and to our neighbors that we indeed want them to live productive lives, be able to enjoy each and every day in the community free from fear, and that we would find every way we can to show them compassion and care and dignity and respect, and know that we value each and every member of this community. of this community.
Thank you, Karen. And I believe I'm going to come back to Shawna for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, when I'm suggesting that our community contacts, that our congressional representatives, that in addition to always feeling like you are welcome here, I think all of us, we will sit here all night long and give our community the opportunity to come and, and say your piece and express your concerns. And I truly mean that. I will sit here all night long and listen. Thanks.
Thank you, Shawna. Mr. Alawas?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I mirror a lot of what was already said by my colleagues. When I ran, I ran on hometown values, and those values are connecting with the public, connecting with our residents. It's so very important. We've received emails, text messages, phone calls on both sides of this issue, and we listen. That's what it's all about. We listen and we act where we can act. It's so very important that we are connected to our community. The, is, is so very, very important. I actually enjoy listening to public comment. I enjoy reaching out and trying to help, whether it's in public comment or someone calling up and asking for some help with a specific item or anything of that nature. And we all go out of our way, all of us go out of our way to try to help the community in any which way we possibly can. But I also want to, to let everybody know, when we're up here and we're listening to public comment, we do not interfere with that comment. We are sitting here stoic, if you will. And sometimes you might think that we might not be paying attention, but we are. But we allow the person their time, their three minutes, so they can do what they need to do to convey a message or an idea to us. With that being said, there was a question that was asked about, you know, do we carry passports? I carry my passport everywhere I go, for reasons that I'm not going to get into. But, you know, that is not necessarily brought up when we have this conversation, because we don't have two-way conversation. This is, I applaud the audience, I applaud the residents from coming out, because we always need to see the different side of life, the struggles that people are going through, and how we can help within our realm of being able to help. With that being said, there was a topic that was brought up about the Dale property and the 55 units. We don't know yet what is going to be there. We are only starting the negotiation process hopefully tonight if we approve a certain item on here, so it's still yet to be seen. And it was brought up twice by a mother and a son about cats. Adam, do you care to weigh in on what they can do as opposed to having to go themselves? Can SPCA, can they come in?
I don't know off the top of my head without understanding some of the details. It sounds like Mark Archibald's been contacted. I sent a text to their president and CEO just to get some background on the issue, but staff will be engaged throughout the process and, and we'll figure out what's possible. The, the comment that was made about feral cats is pretty common. That is a standard item in most cities' municipal codes about the allowance of feral cats. And so usually, we can, we can sort through that. This issue, a little more particular, due to the, due to the cats and their status as being sick or ill is an entirely different issue altogether. So staff will meet tomorrow and we'll, we'll talk to Inland Valley and figure out how we can best assist.
And I would imagine it's concerned to the ingress and egress of Dale property. That's still yet to be determined when we go through this process.
I think, I think as was said, the entire development, or what type of product or services or the population, all of those things are to be determined, so as outlined in the agenda this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Michael.
One other thing.
Yes, please.
Add some other notes. I wanted to, to thank the Rotary for the Field of Heroes that they had this last Saturday. And we had Senator Perez that was out, and we had a wonderful conversation on wonderful bills out there, and also expanded the discussion on homeless and what the state can do, particularly with the Prop 1 money, of different opportunities that are available out there. It was a great conversation. She actually asked for more information, which I sent yesterday, of different opportunities that she was completely unaware of. So hopefully we can attract some of that measuring money back. I also let her know that we were opposed to her bill as a city-wise, and I gave her the reasons why we were opposed for particularly providing certain services, because we have our, our, our team out there that goes out and provides services, and we get them into, into the system, and we work on finding some housing for them. Also, I want to remind everybody about the upcoming, this Saturday at 6:00 p.m., it was Night on the Plaza. It's a nice event, and hopefully it'll be cool enough for all of us to attend and enjoy the evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. I too want to lend my support to the statement that was put out early July after the events of immigration control coming to town. I'm going to go on a limb here, and if the chief hears me say something wrong, flag me. But I want the city to understand that the police department was also caught off guard and learned about that event the same time the public did. They would not advance notice of the events. Their only advance participation is if an agency comes to town with a warrant saying we need your help, or we are after a particular subject for a particular reason with the document. Other than that, PD is not engaging in these events. So they're working to the statement that they declared. Thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back to city manager and city attorney for any comments.
One quick thing for me, Mayor. This is our last council meeting until the second meeting in August, so we'll have that break period that we'd normally do during the summer. So if you're looking for a council meeting, we'll have about a month in between, so appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Airfire?
I have nothing further to add. Thanks, Mayor.
Well, thank you for that. Onto some special items, and these are indeed very special. I would like to ask Councilmember Elias to present a proclamation proclaiming July as Parks and Recreation Month, and invite up our recreation assistant, Megan Stone, and Community Services Commissioner, Eddie Camujian. Hey, I did good. I got to say that name twice tonight and haven't messed it up, so that's, well, welcome. Hey, Shawna.
Well, hello, and, and thank you for allowing me to read this. Excuse me. Our Parks and Recreation Department is one of the things about Glendora that I think so many of the community members love. Doesn't matter your age, from, you know, young kids all the way up to our seniors. We offer a lot of really great resources, and I'm happy to be reading this proclamation. So whereas Parks and Recreation Programs in Glendora promote physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and recreational activity, and whereas the City of Glendora creates memorable experiences for residents through a wide range of programs, including youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers and initiatives, senior activity centers, adult fitness, enrichment programs, free community events, and more. And whereas Glendora's parks and recreation areas foster community and social cohesiveness by providing safe, welcoming spaces for residents to gather peacefully, model compassion, promote equity, build social networks, and ensure all people in Glendora have access to these benefits. And whereas Parks and Recreation in Glendora supports lifelong human development and provides endless learning opportunities that nurture the social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth of people of all ages and abilities. And whereas Parks and Recreation enhances Glendora's safe, vibrant, and attractive character by offering positive alternatives, improving quality of life, and strengthening the overall well-being of the community. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Glendora, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Glendora. Let us take this opportunity to recognize and celebrate the vital role that parks, recreational facilities, programs, and services play in enhancing the health, wellness, and safety of all Glendorans. And it is signed on this 8th day of July by the Mayor of Glendora.
And you're welcome to make some comments if you wish.
Call me. Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the proclamation on behalf of Recreation Human Services, led by Director Johnny Gary. The department works, takes pride in the work that they do, and they work really hard in bringing all the events and the activations and activities that the city gets to enjoy. And they take delight in watching the community enjoy the work that they do, and they love being part, being a part of what makes Glendora great. Thank you very much, and have a great rest of the evening.
Thank you.
All right.
Next item, I'd like to invite up Business Services Manager from the Police Department, Julie Linger, for a recognition of the Glendora Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, as they might be called, with the California Services Association, for assistance with a major event that happened and I'll let them tell us about. Welcome, team.
Hello, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm going to introduce Diana Manzana. She's going to present the award. She's the one that nominated it.
Hi, and good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor, and members of the City of Glendora. My name's Diana Manzana Garcia. I'm actually your Disaster Management Area Coordinator here in Area D, and I had the pleasure of nominating our CERT members for an award with the California Emergency Services Association Southern Chapter for their outstanding support to our partners during the Eaton Fire. So I'm going to just go ahead and read something real quick. We are proud to announce that the Glendora Community Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT, has been honored to, sorry, has been honored by the California Emergency Services Association Southern Chapter for their outstanding service and support during the Eaton Fire Disaster Resource Center activation. Their dedication, professionalism, and tireless efforts in assisting our community during a time of crisis reflect the very best of what CERT represents. Following the Eaton Fire, the CERT members were deployed at the request of the Los Angeles County Office of Emergency Management and coordinated through the Area D CERT Mutual Aid to assist in the operations of the Disaster Resource Center in Pasadena. During their seven-day deployment, their role was vital in managing the influx of community members seeking assistance, ensuring that individuals and families were directed to the appropriate service stations, and efficiently and compassionately. Their participation helped streamline the process, reducing confusion, and allowing affected residents to receive the necessary support without unnecessary delays. They acted as a bridge between community members and available resources, ensuring that everyone received the appropriate assistance with dignity and respect. The outstanding service demonstrated by the CERT members set a high standard for community emergency response efforts. Their willingness to step up in a time of crisis, their ability to work seamlessly across multiple jurisdictions, and their dedication to public service deserve the highest recognition. Their selflessness contribution not only helped with immediate disaster relief, but also reinforced the importance of well-trained community responders in emergency management. Please join us in thanking and congratulating the team on this well-deserved recognition.
Good evening. My name is Brian Arzumi. I'm the Public Safety Manager for the City of Duportie, and I'm also the Chair for the Area D CERT Advisory Board. Diane and I also sit on the CISA Southern Chapter Board of Directors, and so I would like to read to everybody what the award states that is engraved. It's the California Emergency Services Association, Southern California Chapter proudly presents the Silver Award, and Glendora was one of nine teams that responded to our call for service. And so the CERT teams from the cities of Chino, Claremont, Duportie, Glendora, Laverne, Monrovia, Ontario, San Dimas, and Temple City, recognizing the CERT team members for their exceptional service and commitment to community resilience during their deployment to the Eaton Fire Disaster Recovery Center. And so we do have a plaque that we will present to the CERT team, and we also have individual certificates for the members that did respond to the event.
Wow, that's great. Thank you.
We were told only one is here, so we would like to recognize Stephen Avalos. And we also have a certificate for Sharon Martinez, who is not here tonight.
And just to close real quick, again, I want to thank the City of Glendora for allowing CERT to participate, obviously, in this call for assistance and, and really supporting the efforts during the disaster recovery piece of our, obviously, now six-month anniversary. And so it really shows the commitment that the city, the police department, has to the CERT members, and being able to be there for our community members in the time of need was really essential, as we got the request within, I think, what, overnight, and were able to staff it within the first 24 hours. So it was really nice to see that, and it was really appreciated by all community members, not just in the Pasadena, Altadena, but also Sierra Madre and those surroundings. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you for that recognition. And to our CERT folks, thank you for your volunteer commitment. Just another example of the people that do good in Glendora. Thank you. Next item, item number six, is a Police Department Quarterly Update by our good friend Julie Linger. Come on back.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Julie Linger, Business Service Manager at the Police Department, and tonight I'm going to give you a quick overview of what we're doing to ensure that our city is safe and prepared for an emergency. We did not plan this. This award came after this presentation was done, so it kind of, CERT ties into it. So as a city, what we're doing to prepare, oh, where's the... So twice a year, we do an emergency. We open our Emergency Operations Center and have an exercise. This year, our past, we always time them in April with Earthquake Awareness Month, and we do them in, or, sorry, with Earthquake Awareness Month, and then we do in October for the Great Shakeout. This year, we actually had Captain Donchig come out from Monrovia Police Department to share his lesson learned, Monrovia's experience and lessons learned from the Eaton Fire. It was a great discussion at fellow Foothill community, city, similar to Glendora, to see what they, obstacles they went up against during the fire to help us prepare even more. A lot of their issues, we already have, we, would not be issues. We have, so it was kind of reassuring. We've got a lot of stuff already in order. We also do with these Operation, or EOC exercises, we do evacuation drills. So the, twice a year, we evacuate all city faci- So twice a year, we evacuate all city facilities. We do it usually in the morning. So if the library is open, if the teen center is open, they have to get the public out. We have floor wardens for each building, each floor, each city facility, so it's their responsibility to get everyone out, including the public, and they have to meet at their evacuation locations, take roll, and then we send them in. At the same time this is going on, the Police Department is checking the critical facilities for the city. So just good, good operation. We'll have to do this if we ever have an emergency, but we do it at least twice a year, so we're familiar with those locations. In September, it's Emergency Preparedness Month, and for the city, this is a time for us to try to get our employees prepared. We usually do a competition to see who's prepared. We'll see who has a go-bag. They have to send a picture, or send a picture near your closest fire extinguisher. So we do activities like that to get the city employees to focus on emergency preparedness. And then, most recently, well, actually, the last year, we have been working on our local hazard mitigation plan. This is a plan that FEMA requires every city to have. If we were to have a major disaster, this is how funding is prioritized. Cities with the hazard mitigation plan are more likely to get the funding. If you do not have a hazard mitigation plan, you may miss out on some of that funding. The thing with the plan is, it has to be updated every five years. We are in the process right now. FEMA just made new requirements this last year, so we're trying to make sure that our plan meets all those requirements. Some of the newest information we updated was we are mitigating for climate change, which we've never had in our plan before. We're looking at excessive heat, and with that, the power outages that may be associated with it. We are also focusing on the socially vulnerable population, which is a, FEMA's really stressing that now. Unfortunately, sometimes they're not considered enough in mitigation plans, so we are focusing on that. And then we also updated our fire hazard zones, which everybody is probably familiar with now, if you live anywhere on this side of town. We didn't have too many changes, but we did have some changes. So we updated our plan with those new fire maps. And then also, as a city, we collaborate regionally. We worked, just this past year, we've worked with the County Office of Emergency Management and LA County Fire to create our evacuation zones, which I actually believe I talked about at a council meeting before. But these are zones, we, if we were to evacuate, how we would divide up the city to evacuate them. So we had the Fire Department look at those zones. We had the county look at those zones, so everyone could come to agree that this, this is safe, this is going to work. So we've, we did that this last year and firmed up those zones. We also are currently working with the San Gabriel Valley COG. They are creating a regional community wildfire protection plan right now. Got a meeting tomorrow with them, but they have, they've invited all the stakeholders in the San Gabriel Valley, in the Foothill areas, to, to create a regional protection plan. So we are, they're drafting it, they're sending to us for review, and we are providing them the details that are specific to Glendora, so that the plan covers everyone. It's not just a generic, it's going to have specifics for the cities along the foothill. So they are still working on that, still in the drafting, drafting process of that. And then we also continually work with our Foothill communities, not just through the, the COG. Just last week, we had our annual wildfire cooperators meeting. Diana, who presented the award, usually puts that together for us, but we met with LA County Fire, Cal Fire, we have the Red Cross there, we have Public Works there, anyone who may be involved if we have a wildfire in the city. So we usually do it at the beginning of summer like this, so we build those relationships now. So if we do, knock on wood, if we have something happen, we've already got those relationships built and work out the details. As you know, with our hills, there's lots of agencies involved. It's not just Glendora. We've got Cal Fire, we've got County Fire. So we have our meeting, our yearly meeting to, to discuss that. The topics this year, we were talking about evacuations, EOC evacuations, and the huge conversation is public messaging. As we saw with the Eaton Fire, there was, there were some public messaging, messaging things that could have probably gone a little bit better. And we also work community engagement programs. We do an annual basic community emergency response team class. That's the people we just had up here. They have taken the CERT course at some time in their life and decided to put in the next step and become a part of our team. So we offer that annually, and what it teaches people is basic disaster response skills, such as fire safety, light search and rescue, and disaster medical operations. We also do community meetings. Some CERT team members, or I, we, or as a group, will go out, and we do neighborhood group meetings, our Neighborhood Watch meetings, we do service groups, presentations, and we've also gone to some senior, some senior groups to present. City events, so this year we were at the birthday with our CERT table, and we had a PD table, trying to get, teaching people how to turn off their gas meters and basic emergency prep information, go bags and things like that. And then on the PD side, we were trying to get everyone signed up for our new alert and warning systems. And lastly, city partnerships. So we have worked with the LaFaitra Center a couple times this year to get into some of their events, to try to get focused on getting seniors signed up for those emergency alerts. And with the library this year, we teamed up with them and did How to Survive a Zombie Apocalypse. It was a fun way to just teach families, there were kids and families there, to teach the basic steps to emergency preparedness. So they learned how to do tourniquets and things like that. So this, so just this year, with the Glendora Community Survey, this are new questions, I think, on the survey, but they did some, they had a whole section on emergency preparedness. And one of the questions was, how prepared would you be to self-sufficient in the event of a wildfire, natural disaster, or other citywide emergency? This is a great statistics because it's Glendora. It's specific to Glendora, so this gives us some goals this year, what we need to do. Not so bad, the 15% not prepared at all is really scary to me, but we're going to work on that. And 2%, I'm assuming if they're not sure, they're probably not prepared either. So we have 17 we really need to focus on right now. So you look at this, and it may not, it may not seem like that great, but when you compare it to a national household survey that FEMA does yearly, they don't have their 2025 yet, but the 2024, if you look at these stats, as a nation, they're saying 83% of the population has taken at least three steps to be prepared. And if you look at our pie chart, it might not look like we have those 83% people prepared, but when you look at our Glendora survey that asks specifically if people have these items, that's prepared. Those are steps of preparedness. So if you looked at those top three, 82% have the first aid, 80, or yeah, 82% have flashlights, and 82 have a 70-hour supply of prescription medication. I would say that's a win. I think we're pretty close to that 83% national score. The thing with us, too, it's also hard, you know, this is nationwide, and we don't have those yearly disasters. We don't have hurricane season. We don't have tornado season. We have the earthquakes. For, unfortunately, I guess, our fire season is kind of turning into that yearly natural disaster. But, so I think this is a pretty impressive number. I think we're doing good. But we want to continue based on, on these results. Another stat I personally like to look at, because I think it's huge, during a disaster, communication is the key, I think, a key to making our residents feel safe and get them the information they need. So this goes back, we switched over to, from Nixle, which we had prior to March of 2024. With the Nixle system, we had about 22,000 users. When we switched to Rave, our new system, in March, we immediately got 10,000 more users, because that company was able to pull from a public database more numbers from a public database than our previous, our previous provider, before, before Nixle. So they, they could pull more in than Nixle could. The interesting fact is, on January 7th, the first text we sent, the first alert we sent out regarding, it wasn't even the Eaton Fire yet, it was Prepare for the Winds and Fire Potential. Between that text that morning and the following morning, which is the Eaton Fire started in between that, we had over 1,000 more users registered for that alert and warning system. It's sad to me that we have to have a disaster to, to get that, but we got 1,000 more people in less than a day, just because they saw what was going on. So hopefully, we don't have to have a disaster. We're going to keep pushing it. But it was nice that, to see, it, it opened people's eyes and knew that they needed to get the information. And currently, we have 38,000 users, and when you look at this, compared to our population, that's almost 74% of our people signed up for the alert and warning system. So I think that's pretty, we're doing pretty good. There's just a reminder, if you don't have it, text Glendora to that number and get signed up. So with all these numbers, we're going to continue our outreach. We're going to focus on our alert and notifications, because I think communication is key. We're also going to focus on safety profiles. This is with our alert warning system. People can go in and actually create a profile for themselves. We also want to focus on the access and functional needs, that, and people knowing their evacuation zone, which is another Genesis Project is what it's called. They can put in their address, and it will tell them what their zone is. That helps us communicate with the Fire Department. When we have a fire and the fire personnel tell us we need to evacuate one, two, and three, we can go right on the map, and as the Police Department, we can pull those up on our phones and know exactly what they're talking about and get those people out. So it's a communication tool for us. The big thing I have down here, we currently only have 28 residents registered for our alert and warning system that say they have no transportation, or they have mobility limitations. So this year, really want to focus on this. With this, our new alert and warning system, they can create that safety profile, and they can go in there, and there's check, it's just a checkbox. They can check if, if this is going to be an issue for them. This is huge for planning purposes. We can pull this up and see where these people are. So we are really going to push, I hope, to work with LaFaitra more this year, and try to get in with those seniors and the people who may have mobility issues, and get them registered for this, so we, so we know where they are. So, preparation is, it's a team, it's a team effort. We can do the outreach and try to get everyone prepared, but it's really a shared responsibility, and we need to get everybody to do their part. I would encourage, hopefully, our residents, take those first steps, sign up for the alerts, know your evacuation zones, gather some basic supplies, and I also encourage them to meet their neighbors. This is something I think people overlook in these days. Not everybody knows their neighbors, but this is huge. It's kind of what CERT is based on. During a disaster, the first responders are usually neighbors. They're not the police. They're not the Fire Department. We have critical facilities we have to check. We have other things we need to do. So it's really important for people to meet their neighbors. Again, if you have people who need help, the access and functional needs, it's nice to know if you have neighbors that have those needs. But then there's also neighbors in your neighborhood who may be able to help you. You may have doctors, you may have fire, you may have valuable resources. So I encourage people to meet their neighbors. As the city and the Police Department, we're going to continue. We're still committed to prepare Glendora. We're going to continue our training exercises, our public outreach, and continue to foster those partnerships with our surrounding cities and the other stakeholders in the area. That is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, to Avalos?
Just one quick question.
Yeah.
The gas company used to give out the wrenches to turn your gas off.
Yeah.
And with your water, some of us have quarter-turn valves, but those are tied into a water meter with PVC a lot of the times. Do, or does the city give out any of the wrenches for the water meters? Because those are, take a special wrench.
I don't know that. I'll ask the Water Department. They, they always give goodies away. I don't know. I'll, I'll, I'll check with them. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if they, they do or not.
And the gas company.
Yeah, the gas company, and yeah, we like...
Little wrench that they use to give away.
Yeah, and you know, with those, those wrenches designed for it are awesome, because that's what they're designed for. But if you have a pair of pliers, it'll work, too. With that, I'm just going to put my two cents in really quick, because emergency preparedness, whatever you use, make sure you attach it to your gas meter, because when things shake, you're not going to go in your garage and try to find your pliers or your gas shut-off. So tie whatever tool you're going to use to shut off your gas to your gas meter. I don't know. I'll find out about the Water Department and get back.
Thank you.
Nobody from Water Department here right now. That might be their new freebie.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Shawna?
Oh, I just have a question, actually, two questions.
Okay.
The CERT team, are they, is that all volunteer?
Yes. Yes. They, good people, good people.
And I just want to say, I'm, I'm so impressed by your outreach. I don't know if you remember, but maybe about six months ago, you actually came and presented to my Seroptimists group about emergency preparedness. So that was fun. That might be before I was on council.
Okay.
I don't think I knew you then.
Yeah.
It was a great presentation. And you had mentioned the, that we only have 28 individuals with mobility issues that are registered. I just had a thought when you were saying that. I wonder if it would be a good idea to do some kind of outreach with individuals who are using our public transportation?
Yes.
Because those people...
Yes.
Have a reason.
That's a, yes, that's a great idea. And I, I need to work with, yeah, we need to, we're going to do that. No, it's awesome. And, and that's why we're looking different ways, because we've got to reach these people, and there are other city departments here that deal with those people. So yeah, it's great. Thank you. We'll do it. Anything else?
No. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. One more fun item. Presentation about our National Night Out, and I'd like to invite Support Services Supervisor Mark Archibald to tell us about his good times. Welcome, Mark.
Mayor, City Council. National Night Out is a nationwide campaign that strengthens police-community partnerships, builds neighborhood trust, and raises awareness around crime prevention. The City of Glendora is proud to host this year's event on Friday, August 8th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Pink Banner Park. This amazing event matters to Glendora because it reinforces relationships between community members and public safety teams, and encourages community engagement and trust, creates a safe, family-friendly space to connect with Glendora Police Department, city departments, local organizations, and supports our city's vision of a safe, connected, and caring community. Some of the activities will include meet-and-greets with police officers, firefighters, and city staff, touch, touch-a-truck displays, and food, games, giveaways, music, and our kids, our famous kids dance contest. With participation, with, excuse me, with participants from the Glendora Police Department, including recruiting, Pink Patch, Community Preservation, the Auxiliary, CERT, F-Set with the Sentinel, and of course, our station dog, Sugar. LA County Fire will be there with one of their engines, city departments, including Public Works, Parks and Recreation, the Water Department, the Transportation Center, and library personnel, along with volunteer groups such as Rotary, Historical Society, local sponsors, and businesses. The 2025 goals of the National Night Out include boosting attendance through school and neighborhood outreach, highlighting safety programs like CERT and emergency preparedness, encouraging youth and family involvement, promoting cross-department collaboration, and showcasing city services in a fun and welcoming way. I invite the Mayor and City Council to attend and engage this community once, this community event once again, help promote, and help promote the event across all platforms, and champion National Night Out as one of the many steps towards strengthening, strengthening, strengthening public trust. In short, National Night Out reflects the best of Glendora: safety, connection, service, and pride. Let's work together to make this the most successful National Night Out yet, yet, followed by the final movies in the park of the season. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Questions, comments? Randall?
You know, I would just like to affirm everything that you've said, especially in light of what has taken place from 7:00 to 8:30. This is, this is a tremendous time where everybody who wants to can come and talk to, and, you know, one of our team, and confirm the fact of what this letter that, that we all have signed on to. And strengthen those bonds, and strengthen the sense of, you are safe here. You can call us. We're, we're, you know, here to, you know, help. So I just encourage each and every one to make it a point to come out and meet our... So I just encourage each and every one to make it a point to come out and meet our outstanding team and, because it is a fun time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Archibald.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. All right. This brings us to our consent calendar, items eight, nine, and ten. May all be enacted in one motion without individual discussion unless someone wishes to pull an item for discussion. Does anyone wish to pull an item?
I'll move items eight through ten on the consent calendar.
Okay, I'll accept a motion by Mr. Alawos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson for consent items eight through ten, please vote. Vote is unanimous in favor, motion carries. Now brings us to new business, item eleven, to adopt the Glendora Station Area Vision Plan, ELN two-two dash zero-zero-five-nine. And invite Principal Planner Hans Friedl to report. Hans, welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Get the mic up here. Okay, so tonight we're seeking adoption of the Glendora Station Area Vision Plan. It's culmination of roughly two years of work. The vision plan is a comprehensive land use development strategy for the area within one half mile radius of the Glendora Station with a focus on accommodating the housing densities committed to in the housing element in a realistic way. It establishes an urban design framework that promotes a pedestrian and transit-friendly environment while addressing the city's housing needs. It aims to leverage the transit and mobility enhancements surrounding the station, outlines a development vision through various scenarios, and identifies the regulatory adjustments required to realize these hypothetical scenarios. The vision was shaped through an extensive public engagement process, which I'll talk about more in a minute here, including meetings with property owners, stakeholders, LA Metro staff, Glendora's Planning Commission, and city council members. So up on the map, on the screen here, I've got just a vicinity map which shows that one half mile outer circle. The inner one is the quarter mile radius. And then the sort of, you know, irregular shape is the actual planned area itself. We further, we refined it down to the parcels that are most likely to develop over the next ten to twenty years with the highest redevelopment potential. And when Placeworks comes up here, our consultant to go over some of the scenarios, we can talk about that a little bit more. But we specifically excluded single-family neighborhoods as assembling lots and redeveloping, redeveloping on large scales isn't likely to happen over this timeframe and, you know, preserving some of the existing neighborhood character that wouldn't go with that either. So within this one half mile radius are ten of Glendora's housing element sites, accounting for around one thousand units of the roughly twenty-four hundred or about forty-five percent of our city's regional housing needs assessment, arena numbers. And that sort of diagonal line, just for reference, going from the, I want to look over my shoulder, but the top left to middle is the A-line or the, the metro extension. And the Village is right in the middle there, and that's Glendora Avenue going north-south. So Y-plan, it's really a convergence of opportunities, plans, and events. So the plan opens with this Seneca quote, which is luck is what happens when preparation meets opportunity. And that's what the vision plan represents. It's preparation at a unique and probably generational intersection of different planning opportunities and challenges, including the A-line extension. The arrival of the A-line or formerly Gold Line, Glendora Station is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, perhaps a lifetime for our community. It's the most significant transportation investment since the two-ten freeway extension, you know, back in the seventies. Number two, certification of Glendora's housing element. Certified in twenty twenty-three, about two years ago, it commits Glendora to planning for again around twenty-four hundred new housing units with about a thousand of those being in this area. You know, regional best practices show that the highest opportunities for both housing and jobs are in transit-rich areas. The Glendora Economic Action Plan, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, this plan outlines strategic goals and performance measures to support a strong local economy, things like attracting desired businesses, new restaurants, supporting business retention, enhancing quality of life. The vision plan, we've rolled some of those things and tried to incorporate that into this plan. And then the Glendora twenty-three, twenty-five Strategic Plan. Objective four of the strategic plan explicitly called for creating a development and vision plan, or development plan, vision and development plan for the Village Gold Line area, including tasks to develop concepts for future housing and commercial development, as well as identify key sites for targeted growth, which this plan does. In terms of funding and support, you know, the fifth, the fifth key opportunity came in two thousand twenty-two when LA Metro's Transit Oriented Communities Technical Assistance Program, or TALK-TAP, which you'll hear us say or see referred to in the document, offered up to two hundred thousand dollars for technical planning assistance for local agencies to do transit area plans aligned with their goals. We applied and it was run like a grant program. We received that full amount to explore how to accommodate housing for all income levels within this half mile area and do those other things I mentioned in a context-sensitive, community-driven approach. Additionally, we committed twenty thousand in local match funds and staff time. We probably invested much more than that in reality in staff time on this. So I'm going to just highlight this slide for a moment, what the vision plan is and what it is not. And I'll start with what it is not. So, and I think this is important, it's not a rezoning, not a regulatory document, it's not a redevelopment project, an approval, or a site-specific development plan, and it's not authorization for any building or construction. It's a vision plan. What it is, it's an illustration of the city's aspirations. It's a set of development scenarios based on real-world data and also looking at some of our neighboring cities. It's a roadmap for what regulatory adjustments would be needed or required to realize those scenarios. Advice, advisory in nature, and it's a long-range vision for how Glendora might grow around the station over the next ten, twenty-year timeframe. And, and beyond, honestly. So public engagement, I want to highlight this too. The plan was created through a scenario-based planning process, identifying problems, setting clear criteria, analyzing conditions, exploring alternatives, selecting preferred scenarios. Public engagement was baked into the entire process. We did a lot considering the scope and the budget. When I say we did a lot of public outreach, I mean that, in fact, you know, we were talking about this, we did more engagement for this plan and more varied multifaceted engagement than for the housing element, which this covers less than one square mile of the city. And, you know, this outreach included two open houses, one in person, one virtual, both of which we mailed brochures, not, they weren't, they weren't like the public notice things. They were actually full-color brochures with maps and QR codes and stuff. I have a couple here for anybody that could bring them up. I think they're in the appendices of this, though. And so we did that for the first meeting to about three hundred and fifty property owners, and for the second open house to not just the property owners in the study area, but also about a hundred businesses as well. So it was like four hundred and seventy went out. We had a booth at two Earth Day events, which are well-attended in Glendora, including the rainy one this year. We had flyers and handouts for Halloween trick-or-treating at the counter and also just at the counter in general. We did posts and invites via social media and city channels. There was a presentation early on to the downtown, the Village Bid. Also interestingly, a dedicated planned website, we created this, this website, the consultants did. And it had videos of the meetings, a full copy of the draft plan with the ability to comment like on any page or the plan in its entirety. And in addition to all the normal, you know, normal stuff we did advertising on the webpages. So, you know, the webpage had about two hundred and seventy-five, roughly three hundred unique views, and it again had all that stuff I mentioned. We had an online survey promoted citywide early, two Planning Commission study sessions, and then we had some individual meetings with Planning Commission and City Council members as well. Here's some, you know, these slides go through different overviews of the different, you know, mailers, e-blasts, and the different number of entries and attendees at the in-person open house. The plan itself does include these bubbles, which I enjoy, that are sort of, these are the totality of comments, the written comments that were received via the website, the comment boxes, and then sort of responses to them as well, where maybe the information that they're related to can be found in the document. Okay, so that brings me to the timeline. You know, it's about a two-year effort. The funding was about two years old. We've been doing this planning effort for about a year now. And that was sort of the scope, budget, and design. Went to Planning Commission last week where there was a unanimous decision to recommend adoption. And here we are tonight with, you know, public meeting to do that. So with that, I have Chad So and Alan Loomis here with Placeworks, who are the consultants the city partnered with to create this plan. And I'd like to introduce Chad So to do the next part of the presentation.
My name is Chad So, and I'm an associate with Placeworks. We're the consulting team that helped prepare the station area plan. So I'll dive in and provide kind of an overview of what's actually in the plan. The main document consists of five chapters: introduction, vision, development scenarios, public realm improvements, and implementation. The plan is also accompanied by a series of appendices that provide the technical analysis that inform the plan. So I'll quickly read or elaborate about the study area. It generally focuses half mile around the station, which is about a ten-minute walk. About the time someone is willing to walk to the, to a station. It was further refined to exclude areas that are not likely to change, such as low-density residential uses and recent development projects like the Avalon. And some key areas include the Albertson Shopping Center, the Vaughn Shopping Center, and Glendora Village, and the Civic Center. Again, to reiterate that Glendora's housing element, there's ten sites within the station area that can accommodate approximately forty-five percent of the city's projected housing demand. So something to consider is if that these sites underperform, then the city will have to provide housing elsewhere in the city that we, that may not benefit from being adjacent to the state, Glendora Station. So I'll go through a bit of the process of how we developed the vision. Our first step was to conduct a robust existing conditions analysis that reviewed the urban environment within the study area. Examples of analysis topics included land use, community assets, lot coverage, ownership, and utilization rates. And again, the full technical analysis is included in the appendix. Following the existing conditions analysis, the next step was to determine which areas were best suited and most likely to accommodate new transit-oriented development. To do that, we assigned each parcel a development opportunity score. The opportunity score is a summation of points assigned to each parcel based on various criteria such as lot size, contiguous ownership, and vacancy. The higher score a property receives, the more likely the property would attract transit-oriented development. So what you see on the screen is if parcels that scored, that had a higher development opportunity score are shown in the darker blue and includes areas such as adjacent to the Albertson Shopping Center, the Vaughn Shopping Center, and some selected parcels in Glendora Village. Once we had these preliminary opportunity sites, we then took this and asked the community what types of development should be encouraged and where should they go. We received a range of responses with the highest votes for three-story residential, which is common, which you see in Glendora today, followed by four-to-six story mixed So to recap, we reviewed existing conditions, we analyzed development opportunity at the parcel level, and we collected public input. This process informed the creation of development scenarios in selected focus areas. And we honed in on six focus areas shown on the map in the darker blue, and we'll go over these in a, in a, in a moment. And it's important to note that the housing element identified about a thousand units for these sites within the station area. Our development scheme in the vision plan summarized in the table accommodates various development types to achieve eleven hundred units. And in a moment, we'll go through each of the six focus areas and the development scenarios for these areas. And so the urban design concept informs the vision and provides a framework for land uses in the station area. The goal of the concept is to create an attractive, diverse, and vibrant neighborhood with a mix of medium and high-density residential units within walking and biking distance to the future Glendora Station. High-density mixed uses are focused just south of the station. That would provide future residents with convenient transit access. Another medium, medium-density mixed use anchor is located at Foothill Boulevard and Glendora Avenue to emphasize the intersection as the southern gateway to Glendora Village and adjacent C to the Civic Center. Activity notes shown in the blue stars on the map provide placemaking opportunities such as public pauses and art, while key connections shown in the white and green arrows include public realm enhancements to facilitate safe and comfortable movement to and from the station and throughout the study area. And so the process leading up to the development scenarios and the urban design concept then translated into the Urban Design Illustrative Plan, or Vision. This plan illustrates a possible, possible pattern of development to support a pedestrian and transit-oriented environment. Again, following two of the principles, higher densities are focused adjacent to the station, while smaller-scale town home developments are located in other focus areas. This drawing does not require that these specific buildings be constructed on these particular sites, but rather suggests the possibilities the plan creates for property owners. So I'll now pass it over to Alan to provide an overview of each of the six focus areas.
Thank you, Chad, council members. Thank you for indulging us this evening. So as Chad said, I'll go through these development scenarios that we looked at. And I'm going to start with the sites that are directly south of the rail station, running from parallel to Vermont Avenue and going down to Route sixty-six. One of these sites is currently the, the parking lot associated with the metro development, and that would be the building identified as A-one on this graphic. So just to kind of position you. This includes what a lot of people might refer to as the backside of Albertson's, but not the Albertson's structure itself. So to position you here. So one of the, one of the scenarios of the kind of way we thought about these different sites, and this illustration is a good indicator of this sort of thinking, was, on the one hand, we wanted to evaluate sites using realistic development scenarios. So the, the footprints of these buildings can fit on these particular properties to, as we're showing. Some of the properties are smaller than others, so they're smaller kind of pieces. There are large properties and smaller properties, so each of the different scenarios is scaled to the property. For the most part, in all the scenarios we illustrated, we are respecting existing ownership. So larger buildings are located generally on properties that are under one ownership that are large, and then if they're smaller buildings, it's because that particular parcel is smaller in terms of its ownership. So we're not assuming a pretty significant degree of lot consolidation in order for these scenarios to play out. That, of course, could happen, but the way we drew these scenarios out is respecting existing ownership patterns. So it really suggests that individual property owners may or may not take advantage of the possibilities this plan presents, and they may choose not to engage in the plan. This also shows a variety of development scales. So there are some bigger buildings here in the scenario, the A-three, A-one buildings, A-four, a little bit bigger, but the A-two buildings are much smaller. Those are only represented as three-story buildings. The red box is indicating a commercial structure facing out onto Route sixty-six. So there's a mix of commercial and different-size buildings with different types of residential units intermixed in this one illustration. So the idea that's represented here is that when we, we started drawing this out, we didn't approach this with a one-size-fits-all scenario. We really thought it made sense that there are different sizes of housing developments, different kinds of units to accommodate people at different points in their lifestyle, whether they're empty nesters, young couples, young families moving in, the whole kind of spectrum, or seniors. The whole spectrum can be accommodated in the different scenarios we've drawn. So that's a really kind of key idea that kind of weaves itself through the different scenarios. The other thing to say is that although it doesn't always look this way, we've actually modeled these out using kind of pretty rudimentary sort of computer models, and all these buildings are drawn to be more or less self-part. We're not. We're not drawing these buildings under the scenario that the state has produced, which is to say you can build everything around a train station and you don't have to provide parking. We kind of took the approach that is not realistic in the San Gabriel Valley market. You look at your neighboring cities to the east and the west, developments that are being built right next to the train are being built with parking. That's what the market is demanding right now. So as we drew this out, we assumed that buildings would be providing parking at market, market standards. So what we're showing here is the sites A3 and A1 are the larger parcels that are under metro control or kind of associated with metro control. And then, as I said, the A2 parcels, these are smaller parcels fronting onto Vermont. So those are more three-story apartments and townhomes in contrast to the larger five- or six-story buildings that are kind of deeper into this, up against the train in this scenario. On this site, we also think it's important that the city really advocate for these sites to be divided with like streets or private pedestrian paseos, so that you build a neighborhood there, not just one giant project. And so you can see it's, we attempted to try and illustrate how you could divide these sites into smaller blocks. The streets that we drew through here are actually kind of following existing property lines. So two adjoining property owners could come together to create a private street, for example, in this particular illustration. So we think on this particular site, that's also really important, that you break this lar, potentially a very large development, down into smaller pieces, create something more village or neighborhood scale, and not just one giant project. Going across the street on Vermont, so we shift our view here, this is still Vermont Avenue, but now we're looking at the west side of the street. Here, the parcels tend to be a little bit smaller. It's kind of this collection of small, light industrial parcels. And so each one of these individual buildings sits on a parcel owned by one particular entity. So one of these buildings might happen, or all four, or only two, depending on how property owners might respond. Because these are smaller parcels, the development has to be necessarily smaller. So what we're showing here is three-story apartments with some tuck-under parking and some surface parking. So you can see the gray block, boxes there is surface parking. The prototype for this is a development called the Kendry in Montclair, next to their train station, at the corner of Monte Vista and Arrow, I believe it's Arrow Highway, very attractive development. So that's the image in the top left. Another reason to think about these being smaller-scale developments is because the neighborhood to the direct west is mostly single-family scaled homes that are one and two stories. So any kind of excessive density here does not make contextual sense. The next site that we looked at here, focus area C, this is across the street. This is the shopping center side at the corner of Foothill and Glendora Avenue. This one, we think, is an extraordinary opportunity site for the city, and the city really needs to hold out for the right development there should that property ever turn over. And so what we think should happen here, what we're illustrating, is that this is probably the most expensive development type. This is called a podium development, wherein the parking is accommodated with a concrete structure, and then wood frame goes above. This is more commonly seen closer to the coast, but directly adjacent to the village, this might make some economic sense, and our economic models suggest that it would. The main reason we think that this makes sense is because that larger concrete first floor provides an opportunity for a decent-sized commercial anchor to the development. So you could get up to about a 10,000 square feet plus or minus commercial space there on the ground floor. Glendora and Foothill, that could be, that's the size of a Trader Joe's, a Vaughn, or not a Vaughn's, but a, your CVS, your Walgreens, it could be a small movie theater, or some other kind of entertainment venue. We think that could be an enormous asset as a kind of southern anchor to the village. So this perspective now turns north, the village is kind of going, the core of the village is to the bottom, lower left, lower right of the drawing, and City Hall, you can see to the left. So we think this development could also sort of mirror City Hall with a plaza, a public plaza, that then accesses that ground floor commercial anchor. There could be some sort of kind of tall element that's almost like a tower, think about a clock tower, some sort of, tapped with some sort of public art, as a kind of visual anchor to the village as you look south. And then depending on how the building is configured, potentially with setbacks at the upper floors, you could imagine there also being some roof terraces for the residents that might live in this building that are looking north across the village, maybe high enough to get over the gumdrop trees and be able to see the mountains beyond, and you could just imagine it'd be a pretty spectacular sort of living situation. And so the opportunities this site presents are really extraordinary for the city and enhancing the village and the civic center. So we really wanted to illustrate this, a lot of input into this scenario, to say, this is the kind of development you should be holding out for. As we move west on Foothill Boulevard, we come to a pretty interesting collection of sites that are directly south of the Vaughn Center and back up against the metro tracks. So this perspective now, we've shifted gears, you're looking, to the upper right is south. So Vaughn's is located more or less where the two numbers that say 0 and 81 are. The dash line is the metro rail, and this is the point at which the metro rail starts to climb in that concrete structure that flies over the intersection of Foothill and Grant. There's one large triangular parcel that's currently zoned for commercial and industrial that backs up against that flyover. And one of the things we thought we could explore is, what could you do with that site for residential, if you were to rezone it, or kind of entertain residential there? So the scenario, we drew two scenarios. The one on the screen really imagines that site and some adjoining sites on Foothill being built out as a three-story neighborhood or village. Some apartments with walk-ups, but mostly townhomes on the larger parcel. And the prototype for that is just a little bit further west on Foothill, which is the neighborhood that surrounds the Foothill Animal Center. If you can picture the scale of that, something like that could fit right here very neatly, should the city wish to sort of entertain alternative uses for this site. This site is located at the very north end of the village. There's a vacant parcel that was identified in the housing element, and the appropriate development here is, again, a small three-story apartments with walk-up apart, tuck-under parking, some surface parking accessed off the alley, and some ground floor commercial. So you see ground floor commercial popping up here because we know that kind of reinforcing the commercial activities of the village is an important policy goal of the city. And then the last set of sites we looked at are located on Route 66. These are somewhat, probably at the fringe of the project area on that circle that was identified. These are interesting sites. If they were to all be consolidated, there could be some pretty interesting development there, but right now, these really fragmented ownership with a lot of skinny lots with only access going out to Foothill or Route 66, there's no backup, like alley access. So it's really the row of three-story townhomes is kind of essentially what can be built on those sites. So as you kind of go through this, you see a lot of the development scenarios we projected are the kind of three-story townhomes that are already being built pretty extensively in Glendora and across the San Gabriel Valley. As you get close to the train station, the density can be increased, and that's partially because of consequence of lot size, but it's also because as you get closer to the train station, that generally makes more contextual sense. We also identified a couple of public realm improvements, building off of your existing pedestrian plans that we thought should be included as part of the plan. Principally, these include Vermont and there's future east-west streets in the neighborhood in the first scenario that I talked about. So some suggestions about the scale of those kinds of streets. Again, thinking, we're really trying to encourage through development here to have residents that have an attractive pedestrian scape to walk out to, so people are actually encouraged and invited to walk to the train station, even if they live on the outer fringes of that half-mile radius. As Hans mentioned in his presenting, opening presentation, the plan also has a roadmap for the kinds of regulatory changes we think would make sense to implement the plan, but adopting the plan does not adopt these regulatory changes. So the principal ones we looked at were recommended changes to your general plan. So this is a kind of a white paper, if you will, for a future general plan update to suggest that there may be land use changes associated with this. We've identified that potentially there is a transit-oriented district land use and then a mixed-use corridor land use. The mixed-use corridor potentially could be applied elsewhere in the city if that was ultimately the kind of path that the general plan update would go down. And then potential zoning designations that would correspond to those land use districts, a kind of tiered collection of mixed-use zoning districts, and then a more dedicated transit mixed-use district directly adjacent to the chain, the station. So Q and A, happy to go through kind of the recommendations on here, but it's rather detailed, I suppose. So thank you for letting me present that, and to bring us to a conclusion, I'll turn it back over to Hans.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you just a moment. We have a little time clock. We're going to turn into pumpkins here if we're not careful. May I entertain a motion to extend beyond our normal meeting section?
Perfume, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Any vote, any objection? Okay, we're good.
But I won't voice it.
Okay. Thank you, Alan and Chad, very much. Sorry for that little detour.
Sure, I'll finish up briefly here. Yes, yes. So last slide here, I think, for me. So they'll do questions. So next steps, you know, in long-range planning, I think we focus on the future, what do we have to do to get ready for the Glendorans of like 2050? And keep Glendora a viable place then. And this vision plan is part of a series of efforts that we've been working on, including objective design standards, not to just comply with state legislation, but to be more business-friendly and sort of streamline some of our development process and eliminate unnecessary complexities in that. General plan update, so between 2026 and really 2030, 2029-ish, the city will be embarking on a comprehensive update to its general plan. So that's a big, a big, big thing. And then the following subsequent implementation and zoning changes. So that's, that RFP might go out at the end of this year, and so this is maybe an early step at really focusing on this one area of the city, but we'll be looking at other areas then. Housing element, believe it or not, we will have to start planning for the next eight-year RINAs cycle around 2027, and that planning effort, including adoption, certification, implementation, which we've all lived, will extend through most of the 2030s, considering this current six cycle ends in 2029. So I guess that gets us pretty close to mid-century. So it's crazy to think about. Maybe I'll be here presenting, presenting then too. So from a, you know, from a planning perspective, I think getting three areas right will really shape the city's future success as it relates to being, you know, a great place to live for current and future residents, and, you know, competitive with our neighboring cities. And that's, you know, the Arrow Highway corridor, Route 66 corridor, and then this one half-mile area around the Glendora Station, which includes our, you know, a lot of Route 66, and of course, our historic village in downtown, and Foothill Commercial, too. So, you know, capitalizing on some of these transportation corridors and areas, getting them right, and ensuring that they support a diverse mix of, not just diverse mix of housing and are livable, but providing that housing base which will in turn support retail, restaurants, things we all want, and if we're lucky, some jobs, too, not to mention providing, you know, workforce housing for the people that live and work in those places. So yeah. In conclusion, I started with Seneca quote, the plan does, and I'll conclude with a Carl Jung quote, which is, "The world will ask you who you are, and if you do not know, the world will tell you." This and the other planning efforts I mentioned are opportunities, important and critical ones for Glendora, our city and community, to communicate, you know, how we want to develop and not just be dictated to, and who we want to be as a city in the future. So thank you, and with that, happy to take questions.
Thank you, Hans.
Consultants here too as well.
I'll bring it back for discussion and start with Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Hans, and excellent job. And you're right, it's been a couple of years since we've been talking about this. This is obviously due largely to the state and its mandate, and we have to be compliant with that. We've submitted a plan, and now we have to show that we can, we can act on that plan. I think this is what this is. I, I really appreciate the, about the fourth or fifth slide, when you explain what this isn't. Because I think there's a lot of unfounded fear that is out there. And, and I think this is really important for the public to understand. We had a, a public speaker tonight that I don't think clearly understood what, what this plan is not, as, as you put that up there. Personally, you know, I'm an old guy, and I still live in the era of Box and Think Minor Market, and, you know, all of that really neat, neat stuff. But I know that this is life, and this is the way our city needs, needs to go. We have a train that's coming. We've, we've got a lot of exciting things going on, and I think that we need to do this as much as it's going to change some of the traffic flow, the landscaping, the cultural feel. You know, I think it's going to be, it's, you know, going to be fine. I've lived here for 45 years, and I, I love the city more than when I first moved in. And as much as this is a major change, 1,290 new potential doors over, over an extended period of time, the city needs, needs growth. We understand that from the surveys that we, that, you know, we do. So bottom line is, I'm going to support this. There's aspects that, that I don't like about it. The numbers are daunting, but our hands are pretty much tied by what the state is, is asking us to, you know, do. So good job, I appreciate it, and I'll be ready to vote here soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. Karen?
Thank you. Before I say anything about this, I just want to give a shout out to Roxanne for relocating that jeep bug outside. Thank you very much. Very humane and very kind. That's 1,290 new neighbors that you can meet and make friends with. So there you go. You know, the Dead Sea is called the Dead Sea for a reason, because it's stagnant, and I think that is something that we don't want to be in the city of Glendora. And going along the theme of Julie Linger tonight, and with this as well, when you fail the plan, you plan to fail. So I think having this vision plan gives us something to look forward to. It's, as you have articulated, it's not mandating any of these things, but it's giving that vision. Oh, maybe that's why it's called a vision plan. And so it's giving us that opportunity to dream and giving property owners a chance to think, what could be? And so I think that is great, and I appreciated all the public meetings, the input, even the fact that 20 people in Glendora said they like four-to-six-story buildings. That's not saying that's going to happen, but that is just saying that that was one possibility. And so I think all of those opportunities and those visions of what could be in our community to make it a more livable and walkable place. Our village, wow, imagine that, when it was built back in the Dark Ages. It was a livable, walkable place with tall buildings. Oh, my goodness. And so I think that trying to create that space, and I don't think folks understand that some of these things are already happening and have happened for a while. If you drive down Lemon, you will see where many of the single-family homes have been replaced on those narrow lots with a couple of two-story apartment buildings, that people are already doing that and providing that housing for families, and it looks attractive. And so I think that this is great, that it gives us an opportunity to dream of what possibilities are out there. So thank you, and thank you to the consultants for all the, the time and effort and all those conversations you had with folks that came in there and threw their ideas at you, and you took it all in and tried to put it together. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Shawna?
Thank you. Roxanne, your friend is back, by the way.
I, I just want to first say thank you for your presentation, it was fantastic. And thank you, Alan and Chad from Placeworks for your involvement as well, and for being here so late. This is, is a long night. I'm, I'm very impressed with this, I, I heard and appreciate the comments and the concern from the community. And so, I just, I think it's important to reiterate that this, this didn't happen overnight. This is not something that, like, it's just being presented now. This is years in the making, not only specifically with this vision plan, but also the lead-up to it. Like, this is taking work that was already done by council over, over years with rena numbers that have already been approved and incorporated into our housing element. Like, that was already approved by council, the strategic plan. I'm, I'm personally very appreciative that, that this group has taken all of this different data and our community input and formulated this, like Karen said, it's a vision. It's an idea of what we can do to help implement the housing numbers that we are already bound to. And I think it's important to point out that we have, I think, very nicely worked a lot of those numbers for housing into a very specific area around the train station, which is a fantastic opportunity for our community. I mean, this is going to bring residents, like, our, our population is declining. Like, we want people here, or, or, we can look right next door and look at what happened in Azusa. They just closed five schools, like, you know, that's coming to Glendora if we can't bring in students, bring in people. Like, every, the amount of times people tell me that they want a Trader Joe's in Glendora, I can't even count anymore. And, and they're never coming here if we don't have people to shop in their stores. So, I think that, you know, and I'll point out that having places to eat and shop is one of the biggest concerns in the city. And so, I think, I, I love that all of that has been taken into consideration. And I understand, like, the higher-density housing isn't, you know, what some people are looking for, but, you know, in, as, with a background in real estate, like, that's what people want. They want, that's the opportunity to get your first home, a townhome, a condo, and then build your way up to some of our amazing, single-family ranch-style homes that we have here in town. So, I, I don't know, I'm, I love this document, in addition to all the things that you listed about, you know, the community engagement. I've also sat up here and, and myself, shared it with people, I've shared it on social media. So, I, I just, I think that there's been so many opportunities for, for people to be involved over many years. But I also think it's important to point out, like, once this is approved, it's not like a magic wand is gonna be waved and all this stuff is going to appear. I mean, this is planning for decades down the road for, you know, my kids, my grandkids. Like, you know, we're looking long-term and wanting to continue to make Glendora a viable place that people want to live and spend money and, you know, have beautiful homes. And I just, I'm, I'm really appreciative of this, and I think, you know, one thing that kind of struck me tonight, actually, is, you know, I, this is change. It is going to be changed for people, I don't think it's going to be as bad as people assume. It's not like the 15-minute cities that a lot of people are worried about, that's not what this is. But I will say that the best thing about Glendora was on display here tonight. And it's not our, the physical buildings in town, it's the community, it's the people that were here and how we interact together. And so, I think we need to focus on that and not, you know, one or two, four- or five-story apartment complexes that are right up against a train station. So, again, thank you, I thoroughly appreciate your work, I think it's fantastic, I'm super excited about it, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Michael?
Thank you, Hans, for your presentation. I just want to be clear, this has nothing to do with the sixth element, which we've already incorporated. This is for future elements that might come in our direction.
It, it does have to do with the previous one in the sense that it, one of the bumpers or parameters given through this agreement, through the Metro grant and through the, you know, the RFP we did with Placeworks, was to show scenarios that were realistic, that we, with the last element, we included the 80% minimum density with one of the zoning updates we did previously for our housing sites. So, none of the scenarios in this show, so those rena numbers from the sixth cycle are baked into this plan. And that ate nothing, none of the scenarios that we presented or showed go below the 80%, because we're not allowed to approve anything on the housing sites below 80%.
But we've already incorporated, we've already zoned for the sixth cycle and have that approved by HCD already.
That's true, so, that, that is true.
Hans, if I may, just really quick, I, I think to answer that, the question a little more thoroughly, Hans, would it be correct to say that based on the sixth element and really the elements that have come before and the zoning density that has been added over a 20-year period, that the, one of the goals of the plan is to show a realistic way on how those units could be built? Not adding more units, but strictly taking the, the amount of units that we had to have, drawing the outline and saying, hey, in this area are these units that are already planned? Here's a realistic scenario or scenarios on how that would occur.
That's exactly right, and, and I'd be remiss to not say this, because I missed something when that answer that I should have said, was the other thing with the bumpers that we gave them, that's exactly true. Realistic, trying to step density and height up away from the single-family neighborhood. So, not, not do the SimCity thing where you just sort of bulldoze over everything and everything becomes three stories. But the other thing that I wanted to mention was important and is different in terms of what the zoning allows and what the plan shows, is we also made it a point to preserve Albertsons and our grocery shopping centers and key commercial. We don't show those getting turned into three-story or four-story apartments in this plan, they stay commercial. So, that's, that's a little bit different, is we tried to preserve single-family neighborhoods or the detached houses and put density near, you know, busy roads, the train station, and keep the commercial centers in this, and then somehow get those thousand units in here.
But this is basically building on the sixth element that's already been approved for the seventh element that's gonna be coming, which we don't know what the numbers are yet.
We don't know the seventh element.
So, it was brought up earlier today in public comment about public parking, and Metro has made it clear that they want to sell off their parking lot and put housing there. Our, is our contract that we have with Metro for that, because I know we had to have a parking structure before, we entered into a contract with Metro, are they required to replace parking, spot for spot?
So, the, the, the city does have an agreement based on the number of parking spaces that are there for publicly accessible. And I believe if you look at the, at the item that's there as well, it does anticipate some parking. All that said, staffs continue to meet with Metro, the Glendora property, the Pomona property, and I think Laverne are on a list of potential development scenarios, but they would have to go through a process for that to work. So, just also, it's very important to point out that within a half-mile of, looks like, another shot at this, Roxanne. There's another one, that they're not required to, no one is, and we can't mandate that either. So, I think, in this specific case though, the city's expectation would be the parking would be replaced. All that said, as we go about the process and as, and part of the reason why these plans are so important is cities continue, cities continue to lose control each and every day. Every legislative cycle in Sacramento, there's a loss of control. There's bills out before us now, there's one about transit that would allow buy-right 80 units per acre. That's the SB 79, I believe.
79, it has seven stories.
And so, you know, this plan helps us realize what's coming down the pipeline as well as prepare for it so we can build things now that benefit the community in a way that's meaningful for us. But as it relates to the metro parking, the city would work to get as much parking as possible, of course we would.
One thing I'll add to that too, is we were careful with the consultant scenarios to show, and as they pointed out, parking on all the developments. Now, we don't show anything that's not parked or has unbundled parking or any of that sort of stuff.
Okay, so you're saying that by state legislature has basically superseded our contract with Metro?
State generally wins, anyone that sued the state over these housing elements is lost.
Although we have a contract for parking.
Well, a lot of those agreements that you're talking about were put in place over 20 years ago. So, city's made some additional changes, we believe there is some, or has been told to us that the city has a right to the parking for the station, and so, we would work to ensure that if Metro wanted to develop that property, that we would ask for parking to be considered for both the station and a future development. But state law, and look at Danny over here, but there likely is some superseding of what can be done, especially within a half-mile radius of a major transit area like this.
So, we had met, I guess, probably several months ago, we went over the draft of this, and we all had our input in this, and I had several inputs, and we disagree a little bit on if you incorporated in my comments or not, but I don't believe that we did. My concern was the extension of the downtown into the property across the street. You have a ground floor there for some mixed use and maybe some other items that are on there, yes, please bring it up. I don't believe that that really shows the envision, the vision of extending the downtown on top of that's a megastructure that you have there with the parking internally, which can be, I believe, I think that's, what, four stories right there?
I could, probably this one's probably the best one, yeah.
Is that about, is that four sto, is that four stories on top of a mixed use?
It's four-story, and correct me if I'm, if I'm off here, it's a podium one. One of the things that we did is we lowered that height along Glendora Avenue and brought that down, and then we showed the ground floor retail along Glendora Avenue to continue that sort of feel of the village down south as you go towards the, the station, basically. And then we created a plaza at the corner to kind of pull that back a little bit and sort of extend that sort of village feel to tie into the city hall. So, that, those were all changes that were made for some of the conversations and feedback we heard.
So, you're saying the ground floor will be mixed use, and you have that big tower right there, and you mentioned something to possibly having a movie house or something there. So, would, you have that corner there is all commercial and not housing?
It's shown as, and Alan, if you want to help me with the scenario bit, but the, the, the ground floor is shown as commercial, and then this would be residential above it, is the idea here. And then the tower is a tower element, it's art, or, you know, could be, it could be corner loft. You actually lived in one of those at a different city, but could be a corner unit or something, worked into some sort of architectural or art element, or it could be something as simple as like a clock tower or some sort of a, you know, place-making thing.
Basically a box that, hey, there's some residential there and there's some mixed use.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, yeah, it's exactly right, it's a massing study, this isn't the architecture, it's anything else. And I, I would be remiss not, not to mention that, the look and the feel of the village isn't just buildings. I think when we know when a big tree falls down, some of the buildings aren't as pretty as we think they are. So, it's the walkability, it's the enjoyment, it's the landscaping, it's the look and the feel and the continuation in addition to the buildings. So, as we're talking about, as the examples, and, and appreciate the presentation, which really goes into and is this sort of shows the continuation of the look and feel, which is not just buildings, right? And so, I think as, as we consider that, I think it's important to note that these are conceptual enassing. These are not zoning changes that we're approving tonight. These are simply a process of what could be coming down the pipeline. And as Hans shared during to what's to come, we still have objective design guidelines and standards that will be coming next too. So, things to keep in mind as we're discussing the look and the feel and what was incorporated and what's not, the continuation of the downtown isn't just buildings.
But this will be used for zoning purposes in the future for discussion?
It'll be a, it'll be a part of the equation as we, as we've indicated multiple times tonight.
Can you go to the one where the, where the station is and everything south of that? Where you have 600 units proposed?
I think that's the first scenario, this one here, A1?
There's about, what, 600 units proposed there? And my concern, and I voiced this earlier on, was that when people go on and off that train, they're going by, alls they're gonna see is a big monolithic structure. Originally, the condos to the north of that was supposed to be where the station was, so that people went by, they can see downtown, hopefully getting excited and go, get off and spend some money. Now, when they go through, they're gonna see a tunnel of buildings, and there's no reason for them to really get off, there's nothing for them to see. We had some visioning in the past by some universities, Slow did one, where they had two parallel buildings and they had a mall down the center, so that when you drove, when you went by on the train, you can see down that mall area and maybe have some mixed use in the bottom and entice some folks to get off and spend some money. But now, you're just gonna see, what, six, maybe seven stories, depend on if the developer gets bonus tolerances of density. They can maybe go to seven stories, maybe even eight, depends on what they put in there. And you're gonna have a humongous wall right there, and there's not gonna be any incentive for anyone to get off.
Well, I mean, a couple, again, it's massing, so the final architectural design could be quite different than this. I think a couple of things that I'd point out there would be that, you know, again, with the objective design standards, it'll be coming, you know, we, one of the things we look at is like 360-degree architecture, so this wouldn't, wouldn't allow there to be like a loading dock or something like that to be the front of the building, you know, on the backside or whatever the front is, and the relationship with the station would be looked at or examined architecturally. The other thing with this one is the challenge of sort of moving some of that, those, again, that, those rena numbers to try to get, moving that, like, while keeping Albertsons, like, Albertsons is still here, the parking lot for Albertsons is here in this scenario. Along Vermont, so there's, as you go west, there's gonna be some single-family type neighborhoods back there behind the light industrial buildings there now. Not running that, you know, some of the early things we looked at, you know, kind of ran that as another big development there up against those single-family homes. So, this one, you, you don't see it on this slide, but on Vermont, you know, it shows though now is lower, lower, you know, three-story type thing. So, sort of, it, it pushes more of the density towards the commercial, towards the busy streets, towards the train station and, and the shopping center, and then lowers some of that stuff along Vermont. I think another thing that's kind of in the streetscape section of this, and it's a little bit on the left, is there was, to that, which you mentioned, which I liked, which is that idea of sort of a promenade view or something from the station, there's been a lot of thought, and, and it's kind of baked into this plan here, is that Vermont is possibly in the future, again, over this longer time scale that we've been talking about, could become a really interesting street. You know, in terms of being more walkable, trees, streetscape stuff. And so, some of these edges and walls and having that, the residential there could sort of create that feel. Take Vermont, existing street, and sort of make it have the feel of a promenade running through the middle. And then, again, with this one, the other thing was, this was reconfigured to, as Alan mentioned, to follow existing property or parcel lines better than some of the early, some of the earlier scenarios basically just superimposed stuff over the parcel lines. And we know how hard it is to get every property owner to agree and consolidate stuff, and this one works within the parcels that are there now, so, that piece too.
We're talking somewhere around 3,000, roughly 3,000 people in a half-mile radius that you would be adding?
Well, 600 times.
If you had two per unit.
I, I think over the entire study, right? If it was 2.9 and every unit was built, but I'd just be remiss to say that those individuals have already been planned for in that same area. Though, though, those are not net new above anything we've done, those units are already zoned.
To the north of it, on the E, I think it's on Bennett, is that outside of your half-mile radius?
Talking about development scenarios, E.
So, you're adding that to the vision beyond the half-mile radius?
I think the half-mile, Alan, anyway.
And I believe the existing zoning already allows for three stories there.
It intersects it a little bit.
Yeah, this parcel is just fragmentarily within that half-mile, but it was included because Bennett was seen as the northern boundary of the village, and we wanted to capture the entirety of the village. It's traditionally understood.
Like we would have redeveloped.
Yeah, so, but you're correct, it is mostly outside that half-mile radius.
On page 20, there's a presentation that shows 1,100 units, but then on page 106 it is, the verbiage says 1,283 units, which is it?
I think what we're looking at is there's two sets of numbers here. There's gonna be the 80%, and then there's the total number at 100% of whatever the rena.
Hans, do you mind just sharing, just for councils and, and those people in the audience and the millions of people watching at home, what the 80% rule is? I, I know we've talked about this before, and we, and you, you mentioned it briefly, but I think it's important to note why there are two sets of numbers. It's like, here's the zoning totals, and then here's, here's a different number.
So, we have, we have, we have arena sites, and I've talked, there's a whole bunch. I don't know that off the top of my head how many total there are in the city, Jeff would know if he's behind me, but there's 10 in this half-mile area of that total, maybe there's, you know, 50 different sites, okay? So there's ten here. Our total arena number, and I said it's, it's like around twenty-three hundred-ish for the city and those are housing units.
That's for, I, it's six, housing element's six.
Yeah, how, for the six.
We've already counted.
Yeah, 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 so the housing.
What he's saying is there's ten sites, not, not, not the number of it, but we're talking about the number of. Housing sites.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the people watching at home and in the audience, yeah, those, there's these, these, actually, I should just pull it up. I have a, I think one of the maps here will show the housing sites. Or at least I could have a map to look at. Is this, let's see. Well, the development scenario, the, the, I, I don't know if we have a, I'm looking at the plan in front of me and trying to find one here that shows the housing sites here. Yeah, yeah, this one, this one does. Okay, so these, these sort of dark bold lines, they're housing sites. So these are sites selected by the city and approved by HCD and in our house, six cycle housing element to accommodate arena numbers of X number of units. To the two different sets of numbers that you see in different areas. And of course, sometimes when I'm talking about it, I'm sort of just rounding for the sake of, of the, the presentation. And again, we're talking about hypothetical stuff here, um, it's a vision plan. But the eighty percent that, that Adam, you know, was talking about that I'm referring to is in our set of actions to implement the housing element, one of our commitments was that we established a eighty percent minimum, um, density of the total. So, so let's say site ten is supposed to accommodate at dwelling units per acre, forty units. Let's see, let's do thirty, because it's usually thirty units per acre is the density. Then the minimum density for that one acre site that we could approve would be twenty-four or eighty units. So, so if someone showed up, and this happens sometimes, if people say, hey, I'm interested in a site and I wanna do whatever, two-story stuff and it's, comes in at twenty units per acre on a housing site, we can't approve that. We can't go forward with that, we can't, we can't be entitled or any of that sort of stuff for it. They have to come back and hit that density. So therefore, no, there's two numbers, there's an eighty percent, a hundred percent is, is the, the two numbers. And, and actually, this one right here has it, it's the twelve ninety is the hundred percent and then the whatever, a thousand thirty, I think, is the eighty percent, um, of the total units in this area. So no scenario, when we were going to the public and we were sort of doing the research and analysis behind this and there was, you know, a bunch of iterations back and forth to sort of, you know, of, of, of trying to get through this um, and create a vision, nothing that was shown or was created or developed could go below that eighty percent unit. Because what's the point of showing that? There's no way we could approve it anyway. So that, that would, so everything has to have at least, every, every development scenario had to have at least a thousand thirty or whatever the eighty percent is, I think it's a thousand thirty exactly in this area on these ten sites, while also the other instructions we gave them, which is trying to be compatible with the single family neighborhoods, not, you know, put six stories up against the single family neighborhood and then, and then keep Albertson's and Vaughn's intact and the other commercial sites that were identified.
But again, we still don't know what the seventh element's gonna be.
We, we don't, I mean, the, the, you mentioned looking forward to it a little bit and sort of anticipating it. You know, in their recommendations, um, where they kind of make some of those zoning, right? They, they talk about like simplifying our zoning to have more like mixed use zoning along some of the corridors, like transit mixed use one and two and three. Some of that stuff is possibly anticipating some of those things coming in the future, giving us a little more perhaps zoning flexibility to, you know, not be tied to a bunch of disparate small sites as much, but to be able to look at the city in terms of corridors and areas more.
So there was a question that was asked the planning commission about the, the new SEQA changes and the traffic studies uh, that, um, I believe basically is not required anymore. Is, can you give any more?
There's been, and, and attorney may weigh in on this, but there's been a whole bunch of stuff happening with SEQA where a lot of infill stuff is now exempt, um, and, um.
Is there a specific question as it relates to this plan? So in order, so we don't get in trouble by the city attorney over here, how, how, how is it? Or can you tell us how that pertains to here?
Well, because if we do this as the visioning and this is what we're planning to move forward with or not, the residents need to.
So you're talking about like, like the infill development type of scenarios that are here?
So, so do the residents have to, you know, because we just went through some in San Jose, you know, talking about, um, they didn't have to do a traffic study, but they did it anyway for the residents.
Got it.
Now are they gonna think about, hey, they have to do a traffic study for this? Now it looks like they don't, but clarify.
Well, there's a couple of things. So I think the question of the planning commission was for the item bef, a different item.
No, it was this one.
The traffic study for this one? This one's not gonna require.
Well, they asked it for that as well.
Yeah, this is a vision, so this is a vision plan. So thi- this one, so a couple of things, again, if, if some development came in here, and again, depending on what the laws at the time and, you know, what laws may come to pass in January and whatnot, it may or may not be SEQA, require a SEQA review, um, depending on the size. The other thing to remember is that being a long-range planning document, this is making recommendations that we will then can look at when we do our next big general plan update, which includes sort of like circulation elements, transportation stuff like that as well, and kind of look at sort of what improvements may be necessary in different areas in terms of capital investments and things like that to handle the densities and the development that we anticipate in sort of these key areas of the city. So there, there is no traffic study tied to this, um, this plan per se. And it's to be determined, I guess, which things that may develop in this area might or may not trigger which level of SEQA depending on what the laws at the time they come in and how many units and what process. For example, SEQUA relates mostly to discretionary projects. You know, we, through the housing, our last six-cycle housing element, you know, things that are ten, ten-unit or less up, multifamily projects now go straight to building permit and are, will be subject to our objective design standards. That would not trigger any kind of SEQA because there's no, like, you know, planning commission review or discretionary approval with it. So things are changing in that regards with SEQUA, it's kind of fluid right now.
We're not pressed for time for this right now. It just happened to come to a time when it's been completed.
In terms of the.
There's not, there's not a trigger that we have to, to pull right now.
For, in, in, in what regard? Can, can you expand on that a little?
We're not being, we're not having to deal with the seventh element at the moment. We're planning for that down in the future, this was his visioning.
This plan doesn't have anything to do with the se- the seventh element.
Visioning moving forward, so we don't have, there's no urgency to this at the moment.
Well, it's in your strategic plan.
Right.
To do this and there's a timeline there and this feeds part and parcel into the larger plan that staff sent out. So, I mean, including in here with, with what's to come. So it is an important element of the items that city councils directed staff to move forward with. So I would say yes. Is there a some statutory requirement? No, there's some grant funding and some reporting requirements, but in terms of the policy process that staff has been following under the direction of the council, yeah, th- this is an important timeline for us to keep moving forward.
So beyond, I, I'm just wrapping up here. So beyond, uh, beyond putting this on the website, we have not done any community involvement with showing this out there?
Well, we, we.
Beyond the prime, the original one when they put stickers on the walls?
Yeah, we did those open houses and then this actual.
But we have not shown this plan on the open house.
Yes, this plan is linked on the website.
It's been on the website.
But it has not been on a physical.
People have had access and asked this question.
Right, but they have not had something in the Bible or, or like that.
This version was at the, and correct me if I'm wrong, because place works is here, but the, at the virtual open house that we did, which was advertised on social media, the website, our website, the project website, it's not a project, but the plan website. Um, that was substantially this plan that you see here. I mean, there's, we've corrected some, you know, edits and stuff, typos and things like that, but it was this, this what you see.
And it was all over the city's social media and everything else too.
So thank you, I'm not ready to approve this. I think that the residents need to see this. Uh, this is a major change, a major shift to our culture and the, the look and the feel of the city. And I think that they need to be more aware of this. I think there's a lot of folks out there that just aren't aware of this and not our fault because we put it out there, the city has. But I think that, uh, I think when people see this, they're going to have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I re- recognize and I like the slide that says it's not a policy document, but I'm concerned that words mean things and they stick with us. And if we accept this as a vision of idea of where things could be and some massing could be, do we have a way to adjust that? We're not stuck with that. We can still say, no, that plan doesn't work in that spot or this developer's idea doesn't work.
I thi- I think, y- yeah, I thi- I think so, so that, that's a, that's a good thing to, to mention here is that where this plan goes and, and sort of showing a vision of like the character, the types of things, that the way we would like, some people like Glendora to be in the future, vibrant, walkable, housing for, you know, ver- various types of housing and a good mix. That being said, what the plan kind of results in is this series of, and what Alan talked about, these recommendations in terms of like how you would implement this. Those talk about zoning changes and those really would feed into our next, the big general plan update, like the land use and then zoning and the implementation stuff coming in the next couple of years. So through that process, there's gonna, because that's a much bigger thing, right? That's gonna be, you know, this is two hundred thousand dollars, that's over a million probably, right? So there's a lot more public engagement and outreach with that where we can calibrate and fine tune this stuff here and that will be a citywide effort and a lot of, lot more of this stuff. And then sure, you could shift densities around and things like that when you go to that implementation stage.
Okay, because I, I'm, um, very sensitive to the look and feel of the community and not do such massive box massing in the wrong spots or make it look like the big box. And we've talked and seen examples of, while you didn't realize that was five stories, it wasn't five stories and the sidewalk, that's where I'm going, I guess, the, the, the design element and the importance of that. So I think we need to be careful that we deliver something that truly fits and doesn't completely change the, the look of the downtown region or the station area to where, where are we? And, you know, some of the old buildings could stand some love, there's no question about that. But, um, I, I think that we need to be careful and I don't want to get stuck with that. While you said on this date that that would work and now we're stuck, that's not gonna be a good day. I'm also very contemptuous of the state and they're telling us what we have to look like and the cesspool they want the whole state to become. I don't care about the state, what do we want? What do we want it to look? I appreciate the element of self-parking and keeping that in because that's important. Because I don't want the neighborhoods to be collateral damage to the fact that gee, the resident brought a car with it. The state doesn't care about that. Well, I don't care about the state. I don't care about what's Glendora gonna look like to fifty years down the road. That's important. And the train issue, you know, that we got snuckered out of a structure because nothing good happens in parking structures. It's a flat lot because now we can sell our flat lot. We don't care if the rider brought a car, okay? That's Metro's greed. I want to make sure that our ridership can deal with how to get there and how to get home and, and not get stuck with that. And so if we have a new building there, I go to the biggest building here in town, I can't just drive in and park my car. So we need to make sure we have those rules in place that down the road, we're gonna be able to support the station by providing that service. And I don't want to get stuck with later, oh, well, too bad, that ain't gonna work. Are we comfortable with this or let us do that?
We, we've shown, I mean, to the extent that we can, we've shown in the plan that the development of that one A or that site around the station preserves a shared parking. So that that hypothetical massed building there with the parking garage, you know, the ground floor, some level of that would be the existing, would be transit parking for transit users and then the residents would live.
That could become discussion with the developer when that comes to say, hey, this has to be an element to include.
Not if Metro says no.
Um, pardon the interruption, um, Mr. Mayor. Um, but if I may suggest, you know, we could certainly add as, as into the documents, um, if you're to approve it this evening, some language related to that metro site in particular, that is, the city's expressed interest that there be what I call replacement parking, publicly available parking.
Gotta be a covenant if that's the right term or that parking shall be as part of the process.
Yeah, it's like, I, I don't think that, that idea is expressed in as clear a language as being expressed by the council tonight. And I would rec, I would suggest if you move forward that you give us the authority to just add that appropriate language and as a plan, so that's, that's recommend, that's part of, that's in the plan if it was to get adopted tonight.
Mr. Mayor, um.
It needs to be a part of the, if that needs to be in the language to move forward to protect that, I'd like to do that. If it's not important at this point, it's part of the vision, but it can be part of the final development when that day comes and we still have that avenue, I'm okay with that.
I, I think, I think the ask here is if we change the document to sort of express that we want to see that parking. I mean, obviously, when the rezoning happens and Metro comes, then the real debate happens. But if the city's policy document says, hey, we really want this parking there that to be replaced, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm hearing from at least two council members.
Now's the time to put that in, yes.
So I'll make a motion that we approve this with that language that you just described.
I'll make an alternate motion to table or continue this motion until after we have a public physical meeting on this. Give the public a chance to weigh in.
I think, I think the public has weighed in, they've had the chance to see it. And I'm expressing some of that public weigh-in and looking at it. And I think those are important features. If now including that in the language is, is our protection, please do.
There is no protection.
We can put that in the document.
So a substitute motion on the table.
Yeah, so on the second motion, there needs to be a, a second to that, to go forward.
Second motion being to.
To the substitute motion by coun- council member Alawas.
Table or continue it.
If there's no second motion, if there's no second, then it reverts back to the original.
I would second the motion with that extra language.
Is there a second?
Is there, is there a second to council member Alawas's motion?
Table, yeah, I wanna, I wanna get moving, but I want to make sure we're not handcuffed. If I, if I'm hearing that we're handcuffed, then I'm not ready to do it.
You are handcuffed.
Well, I think it's important just to discuss again what the document is and document isn't, right? So we can't promise and look at our crystal ball and what the state can or can't do or what the future mandates will or won't be. This is a vision document of something we will strive to move towards through the various procedures and policies that we must go through, including updating future zoning and a comprehensive update of our general plan, right? That, that's coming. But if we include in the document that we really want that parking to be replaced at some level, whatever that parking is, and pretty soon here, we're gonna see a real life example of just how much of that parking is actually used on a regular basis. We're not gonna see a development tomorrow based on that parking lot. That we'll be able to have those conversations. So I mean, I think if that's the expression that's in the document, then staff has some direction to look for housing. I mean, to, to look in those areas that are fully parked and in, in, including what the future metro station looks like.
So we have two motions.
Yeah, and, and what, what we're saying is just because we write it in this policy document, doesn't mean we can.
No.
But it would give us more weight in having conversations with the developers saying, hey, we've got this document. It says this is our expectation that this, some level of this parking be replaced.
But by state law, it's not required to have.
Okay, so we have two motions on the floor, so do we have a second to either motion?
Well, you mind first if it dies, without a second?
Correct, so seeing none.
I would, I would second Karen's motion.
And, and would you mind stating that motion one more time for the record?
The motion is to approve the strategic, um, I mean, the Glendora Station Area Vision Plan with the additional language about the parking on that lot, as so eloquently described by the two of you.
In your motion, it will also include the adopting the findings for the exemption, correct?
Yes.
That's the second.
Second, yes.
Okay, we have a vote. Motion carries four one. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item twelve, exclusive right to negotiating agreement, E and A, with Mercy Housing related to disposition and development of seventeen sixty-two Dale Road. Presenting tonight is Economic Development Manager Tiffany Chu, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight's staff is presenting the exclusive right to negotiating agreement with Mercy Housing for seventeen sixty-two Dale Road. The site we are talking about is just over two acres at Dale Road and Arrow. The site we are talking about is just over two acres at Dale Road and Arrow Highway. It used to be a senior assisted living facility located within their Arrow Highway specific plan. The city acquired the property in 2023 to address affordable housing. And through 2024, the city council provided direction on the site to provide permanent supportive housing and obtain development proposals. And in December 2024, council directed staff to work with Mercy Housing. And so staff worked with Mercy Housing to develop at the E&amp;A, which is a time limited agreement to plan out the project. The first phase, which lasts 120 days, Mercy Housing provides a deposit and then the city works with them to explore what's possible on the site, plan the community outreach and identify project details like the types of housing, parking planned and funding options. There will be also a working group with Mercy, the city and city council. At the end of this phase, city council will review and approve the concept before, before starting Phase Two. And so the second phase continues for another 270 days. The city will draft legal document, documents for the land transfer, finalize the financing and work on the entitlement process and environmental review. There is options to extend the, the period if needed. And if the city at this point decides to cancel the E&amp;A, the city will owe $350,000, $100,000 in penalties to Mercy. City council will also have the final approval of this project. From a high level perspective, at this point, the project is anticipated to have 65 to 70 affordable homes with approximately one parking space per unit on site services to support residents. And there will also be shared spaces to build community amongst the residents. Uh, leading up to tonight's city council item, staff noticed the neighborhood adjacent to the property along with businesses along Arrow Highway and provided, uh, web, website updates. And so tonight, staff recommends city council approve the E&amp;A. Mercy Housing staff is here available with me to answer any questions about the project. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Bring it back for questions and discussions. Karen.
Yeah, I'm glad that we are finally at this point. It's been a long time getting here. So very happy to be at this point and looking forward to having the opportunity to work out some of the specifics and make this housing a reality. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Shawna?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I have no questions, but I, like Karen said, this has been a long time in the works. So I'm looking forward to getting to the next step of the process.
Thank you. Mendel?
I'm happy that we're here and I'm ready to make a motion that we approve this. But I'll let my mayor pro tem and mayor speak first.
Questions? Questions? Okay.
Just Mayor, then I would-
I have a question.
Oh, I thought, no, I thought you, I thought you said that you didn't have a question.
I'm sorry, I was confirming this comment. Um, yeah, I'm glad we're, we're here, I think, but so this doesn't nail us down to what the product is yet.
This is just a, an agreement to negotiate.
Perfect, great. Thank you. Oh, hold the comments for when it's time for the product. Thank you.
I'll second Mendel's motion.
Motion by Mr. Thompson, second by Mrs. Davis, and please vote. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you very much. Item 13. To award the agreement for contract services with Unix LLC for traffic signal maintenance for a three-year term with an option to extend the term for three additional one-year periods for an amount not to exceed $950,000 annually during the term or any extended term. Talking about our traffic signal lights, one of the favorite subjects of the community. And presenting tonight will be Public Works Director William Witkoff. Welcome, Mr. Witkoff.
Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Before I jump into the traffic signal, there was a question earlier about whether or not our water division provides shut-offs for the water meters. Uh, the answer to that is no, we do not. The reason for that is, is we prefer that the residents don't go to the meters to try and shut their water off to their house. It would be better if they had a separate shut-off for the house. If they were to damage the meter or that service line, it's much more difficult for us to come in and fix that and shut that down because then we're having to shut down an entire area or street sometimes. So just to answer that question, no, we aren't passing out wrenches for water meters. So sorry, I wasn't available when Julie was here, but wanted to get that out. So, uh, thank you for giving me some time tonight to talk to you about our award of agreement to Unix LLC and traffic signal maintenance, which is something very exciting to me and I'm sure to all of you as well. So, um, as we know during recent discussions, our pavement condition and our traffic signals have been a, I think, a hot topic with our residents. And one of the things we're really trying to do is enhance the maintenance of those signals and this award would allow us to do that. So, um, we want to improve that reliability and the maintenance of our traffic signals. So a couple of things, just a little bit of background so you know about our inventory. We have, um, 50 or 62 signals total. 51 of those are within the city. Nine are shared with Los Angeles County. One is shared with Azusa and one with San Dimas. So we've been working with Los Angeles County for maintenance since 2022. And LA County provides a variety of services, on-call, uh, monthly maintenance, quarterly, and as well as some more annual maintenance. So we are really making a concerted effort to improve our signal infrastructure. And as we do so, this really requires an enhanced maintenance program for those signals. So the procurement process, we looked at a number of different options for procuring some additional, uh, signal maintenance services. And after staff reviewed everything, we really determined that the best thing would do to be look at a piggyback option like you see here. As you know, in the municipal code, um, it does allow us to award based on a competitive procurement conducted by another public agency. So we saw as we were looking out there that, uh, the city of Rancho Cucamonga had done a, an RFP for signal maintenance uh, in early '24 and then awarded that in May of 2024. Uh, we've really spent some time looking through their documents and what they do. It's important, I think, to note that the city has, Rancho Cucamonga has over 200, uh, controlled signalized intersections and crossings. And they have a little bit more sophisticated, uh, equipment than we do. So they put together a pretty tight spec, I think, something that was actually probably better than we could do if we took it on ourselves. So staff took the opportunity to negotiate with Unix, asked them if they'd be willing to provide that service for at the same rates, and they agreed to do that. So just a quick comparative analysis between, um, our current service and what's being proposed by Unix. You can see on the left there is Los Angeles County, uh, for their quarterly maintenances, um, and their inspections. They also have a comprehensive annual inspection compared to Unix, which has a comprehensive monthly inspection. Uh, they do the conflict monitoring unit testing every three years. Unix will be doing that annually. Uh, the county does not do the nighttime safety light surveys, whereas Unix will do those monthly. And then you can see there is an increase between the county and Unix. County is $1,000 per, uh, location for the annual cost versus $1,300. The other thing I think it's very important to point out is the county, when they do repairs, that's based on a time and materials, uh, rate for us. So if we're not out there, we're not looking at that, it's a little bit more difficult for us to manage some of those budget costs and what's associated with that versus Unix. Most of those repaired are, uh, done on a fixed rate basis per the contract fees. So that gives us a lot better opportunity to not only manage our, you know, emergency maintenance repairs, but that would also extend into any type of traffic signal improvements that we wanted to do through this process as well. So what are some of the benefits of the change? Again, we get the comprehensive monthly inspections. Um, I brought up the document that's talking just about the monthly, uh, inspections. There's six and a half pages of incredibly detailed instructions of what those, uh, signal maintenance techs are supposed to do when they're out there. So we feel like that's gonna be a huge improvement for us, especially as we take on some of the more complex signals from, uh, the Gold Line or A Line, like at Lone Hill and some of the, our, other areas where I've interconnected signals that will get that, those inspections will help. And will also increase some of our reliability. Um, a lot of those minor repairs, we think, are gonna be caught during those monthly inspections and completed then. Uh, having that nighttime safety inspection, I think, is very important, as well as like we talked about, that fixed pricing for most of the common, you know, signal repairs and improvement projects that we would have. Uh, fiscal impact is always a, a big question. Sorry, the graph isn't a little bit bigger. But you can see for our 25, 26 and 26, 27 budget, um, we're not asking for any additional funds. This will be incorporated into the budget that we have now, so we can stay within our budget for those services. So that concludes my presentation. I tried to make that fairly quick. I know it's getting late this evening. So you can see the recommendations on the slide. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about traffic signal maintenance.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Uh, bring that back to staff. Karen, any questions? Shawna?
No questions. I'm really excited about this. I saw our, uh, favorite Glendora memes guy here earlier. So you're gonna take a lot of, uh-
Of course.
Content away from him, you know, traffic signals are a big deal for him. But I think this is great.
Mendel?
No, this is great. Thank you. I'm good.
Michael?
Thank you, Bill, for, um, your presentation. Just a quick question. When is LA County gonna finish on their book of business?
We'll need to get with the county and Unix together to work out that transition. Right now, uh, LA County has the exclusive rights to the locks in our traffic signal cabinets. So it will probably be phased over a couple month period. Um, as each cabinet's turned over to Unix, the county will release liability for that and turn it over. So it'll probably take us a couple of months to get through that process.
Thank you.
And the only question I had related similar to that. I think we're in the process of a project to update and fix some of the boxes.
That is correct. Yeah, we have, uh, the county is working on that right now. Uh, we expect that they, uh, will continue to complete that project. They're very close. In our last conversation with them, they have the cabinets. They've been tested. Timing's been installed. Um, and you've seen them out in the last couple of weeks fixing some of the wiring in the intersections. That was in anticipation of getting the new cabinets. If for some reason that they can't install those cabinets as part of this, then we'll work with the county and Unix to transfer the cabinets to Unix so they can complete the installation. But I believe the county will be able to finish those.
Okay, within their contracted-
Yes.
Good answer. Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
I'll move recommendations, one, two, three.
Motion by Mr. Alawas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Invite us to vote, please. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you very much. And our last item. Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendora and the Glendora Police Management Association for a three-year term from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. And presenting as Assistant Director of H, of Human Resources, Rita Wendling. Welcome, Rita.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. We're almost done, the home stretch, right? Um, so thank you, um, Mayor and City Council for background, um, on the, um, tonight, we're gonna be presenting on the Police Management Association MOU. Background on them, there are 12 budgeted positions and all 12 positions are filled. Um, Police Management inform the city of their membership's vote and acceptance of the following terms. A three-year contract ending June 30th, 2028. Wages to increase effective July 1st of the current con, of the contract year, um, two, two and a half percent year one, two and a half percent year two, and two percent year three. Um, we also agreed upon a cafeteria plan increase effective July 1, 2025 of $150 to increase their benefit to $1,850. Uh, we have also added to their, um, MOU, a new benefit of $750 shooting bonus if they actually qualify. There's a qualification that they have to meet of a score of 190. And if they actually meet that, that's a one-time annual bonus. So they will be eligible for that going forward. Uh, we also agreed to a deferred compensation match of $50 a paycheck or $1,200 annual maximum. Uh, we have also added a tier, a 10-year tier. The current MOU only allows for 15 years of service to get longevity pay, but we added a 10-year because we actually did have several individuals that went into that bargaining unit and didn't get to keep any of their longevity pay because they were under that 15-year, um, threshold. So we did add, add that to the tune of $400 a month. We also did a flat amount increase for the post-pay for, uh, PMA. And they are, for the gap post, which is from, uh, POA to PMA, is, went from 660 to 750 post-supervisory, went from 720, 7200, I'm sorry, to 850. And post-management went from eight, four, 840 dollar, I'm sorry, 8,400 dollars to 9,500 dollars. That is a 13 and a half, an 18, and a 13 and a quarter percent increase for those three post-certificates. The total fiscal impact for this contract year for all three years is $1.6 million. A draft copy has been included in the, the, uh, staff report. And tonight, I'm seeking the city council's approval of the negotiated terms and conditions of the Police Management Association MOU.
Thank you, Rita. Very nice. Uh, bring it back for discussion. Mendel?
Excellent job. I support this. Thank you.
Karen? Shawna?
No questions for me. Thank you so much.
Michael?
No questions. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, team. And I have no questions.
I'll move recommendations one and two.
Move by Mr. Alawas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Please vote. Motion carries five, zero. Very nice. Good deal. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And with that, I thank staff and team for a great meeting and a long evening and hard work getting us here. So, um, does not go unnoticed. Bring that back for any closing comments or discussion?
Just one really quick, Mayor. Just, uh, a, a thank you to staff. I, I know we had lots of city staff here this evening, uh, during public comment, which we anticipated to be a little larger than normal. And so, uh, staff went above and beyond, making sure everyone was safe and had a place to, to speak and, and share. And the TV outside, al- allowing people in the overflow area to, to keep up with what was happening was really important. So just a, a, a big thank you from myself and the, uh, team here to those staff who went above and beyond this evening.
Absolutely. Very, I go. Mr. Al, Shawna? All right. With that, I will conclude our meeting at 11:20. Meeting adjourned.